I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of May 6, 2021 to order. For those who would like to join us, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. City Clerk, if you could please conduct a roll call.
Councilmember Garner.
Present.
Councilmember Coors.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Holstage.
Present.
All council is present.
Thank you. For presentations tonight, first we have a presentation of a proclamation for Purple Heart Day. I believe Mayor Pro Tim Middleton is doing this one.
Actually, that, we're not doing a proclamation on that. I was going to discuss that during my council member comments.
Great, thank you. So we will move to COVID-19 case update from Emergency Management Coordinator Danny DeSelm.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council. A quick update on COVID numbers. We continue to see incremental improvement in cases. So the county is losing about a .5 case per 100,000 per day, week by week. So this week we're at 3.4, last week we're at 3.9. So as I've been talking over these past couple of weeks, we're seeing very slow incremental improvement instead of the sharp drop offs that we were seeing several weeks ago. So, so far this week in the Coachella Valley, there's actually only been 42 new cases reported, three of those in Palm Springs. So if you look at the 367 cases that the county has had so far this week, that's less cases than the city of Palm Springs peaked at back early, late last year. So significant improvements, very slowly approaching that yellow tier. So we've been getting a lot of phone calls about the CDC's new guidance on what their new mask policy is. Here's a graphic of what that is. As you can see, most of those happy faces are wearing masks, whether they're vaccinated or not. Most activities, it's still encouraged that you wear a mask. This is going to be posted on the website, it's on the CDC. So anybody that is confused by, if I'm vaccinated, does that mean that I don't have to wear a mask ever? The answer is no, you should still wear a mask. That's, that's actually what's keeping those numbers going down. And then for testing vaccination, the county is actually considering dropping one of the three vaccines. Not for any safety reasons, it's just not being well received by people. People are actually steering away from one of the three vaccines. So the county is considering just using that in isolated cases for specific groups and not having that at actual test sites. Barring any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Coors.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do we know, I think the numbers I saw were that 60% of Palm Springs residents have been fully vaccinated? Do you know those numbers? I've heard a couple of different numbers on different calls, so I just didn't know if we have the exact information.
Yes, councilmember, that, that is, I think that's right. About 60% is what I'm hearing as well. I can actually double check those, those figures and get them to you guys.
Yeah, I would just agree for the website, some people know, but what I heard, at least from what I could tell, was 60% have been fully vaccinated, both shots, if they're doing the two-shot regimen. So that's great, and having the convention center has really helped. So great work from the mayor and everyone involved in that. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, thank you so much for the presentation. The next item is a COVID-19 wastewater treatment update from Assistant City Manager Marcus Fuller.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If I can have my presentation, please. This is our latest report on the COVID virus in our wastewater stream. And again, as we've reported in the past, last Labor Day, we were at our lowest levels, peaked at 2.6 million COVID virus per liter around Christmas, and have consistently dropped following the trends that Mr. DeSelm has indicated consistent with state-county metrics. I do want to note, because we did have a spike mentioned in one of our earlier test results from two weeks ago. We had reported at the last council meeting, COVID virus load less than 20,000 per liter, which was awesome. And we were alarmed when we saw a spike the following week. We questioned it because it was inconsistent with all the metrics that we'd been seeing in the state and the county, and up until then, all of our metrics were aligned. So as I mentioned, at the last council meeting, we reported these two figures. And then the next week, we saw the significant spike, and it was alarming because we were not wanting to see a trend back up at such a high rate. So we questioned those results after we saw the test results from last week, which showed numbers back down even further, which was great, again, aligned with the metrics that we're seeing from the state and the county. Because the week was, the week before showed that significant spike up above 300,000. So we questioned GT Molecular, our lab, to revise, review the samples they took from April 19th and 20th and reconfirm the test results. They did verify incorrect test results, and they're pursuing why that happened. But they reran the numbers, and so those numbers were again aligned with the, what we reported at your last council meeting and what we're reporting tonight, which shows that consistent gradual decrease in the COVID virus over the last five weeks from a slight spike around the end of March. And we're now down to the lowest levels, almost, that we saw last Labor Day, which is, as I said, is really, really good news. As we've mentioned, we've also been testing for the different gene mutations they see in the COVID virus. They did detect the two mutations consistent with the Brazilian variant on the April 19th and 20th samples, so that was bad news. But the latest samples from last week showed a dramatic drop in the presence of those gene mutations. And we're also seeing the continued presence of the UK variant. The lab provided us this diagram, which is really interesting. So there's two gene mutations with each variant of these three variants that are prevalent. The UK variant has these two genes which we have detected in our samples. Also, we unfortunately detected these two gene mutations which are consistent with the Brazilian variant. And luckily, we haven't detected both the gene mutations that are consistent with the South African variant. So the good news is, we don't have the three variants, but we do have the other two, but they are at very low rates. And I'll repeat what we've been saying, that we need to remain vigilant and continue to use face masks when required, and maintain social distancing and other measures so we can continue to prevent the spread of COVID, even as we see the numbers continue to get lower and lower, and as we reopen our economy. With that, Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you, Marcus. Are there any questions on the presentation? Seeing none, thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions, or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for separate discussion. So I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items staff or council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and/or vote? And first, just to note that staff is requesting that the city council add approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Palm Springs Police Management Association as Consent Calendar Item 1T. Due to the matter coming to the attention of the city after the posting of the agenda, and there is need for immediate action, a staff report has been distributed to the city council and posted online. So we're adding that item as Consent Calendar 1T. And then for city council, are there any items you would like to pull for separate discussion or vote? Councilmember Coors.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 1K and 1R, I believe, and 1R.
Thank you. Other items from council members? Councilmember Garner.
I need to just recuse from 1P as a Palm Tree.
Well done. Any other items from council members? Staff, are there any items you would like to pull for separate discussion or any additional items?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. I also need to note a recusal on item 1E. As elephant, I'm trying to come up with a Palm Springs-related E word there, because of a potential financial interest. And I'd like to pull 1J and 1K and 1M for separate discussion for staff reports, please. Are there any other items? Seeing none, I need a motion and a second to approve, accept the agenda as amended. Councilmember Court.
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Court.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstead.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item is Report of Closed Session. City Attorney Jeff Ballinger will provide a report of the closed session.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The city council met in closed session to discuss the items that are listed on tonight's agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you. The next item is Public Testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You are asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you're speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of a public hearing, and a general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. We shoot for around 9:00 PM. Tonight, the city clerk will be contacting speakers by telephone. City clerk, if you could please begin.
Oscar Laredo, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes. Okay, Oscar Laredo, you're you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, Council. I just wanted to talk about the skate park and how that Action Park Alliance programs and events have impacted my personal life and the skate community abroad here in Palm Springs. They have been pioneer and in the forefront for adaptive skateboarding, which is a form of skateboarding with persons with disabilities. And they have a great program about inclusion. They are also partnering with myself at USA Skateboarding to get skateboarding into the Paralympics. So having somebody in a corporate company, an organization as resourceful as Action Park Alliance is a great benefit to not only the city, but the skate park community at large. And then, yeah, I just wanted to just say that. And hopefully, that can, you know, chime in and sway you guys to to keep that skate park there and the contract renewed with Action Park Alliance. Because the stuff that they're doing and the things they have in their pipeline is going to benefit all ages and the community abroad. And yeah, that's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gary Miller.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Gary Miller, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
All right. Well, members of the council, we don't want to take a lot of your time. We've resubmitted and believe we have complied with all the architectural review comments, and just hope for your positive vote.
Mr. Miller, do you want to indicate what item you're speaking on?
Oh, yes, we're speaking on the marijuana dispensary on Indian Hill.
Okay, thank you. Does that conclude your comments?
Yes, it does. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
If the council has questions, we'll give you a call back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Duggan, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments. Hi, Chris Duggan, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, Mayor Holstead and members of council. Chris Duggan with the California Restaurant Association. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I testify before you to register CRA's opposition to item 3A, the reusable food service ware and plastic waste reduction ordinance. As written, we base this opposition on three primary concerns. Our first concern centers around the mandating of restaurants to charge a fee on guests for disposable cups and containers. While the staff report states this would be optional or incentivized, the language in the proposed ordinance clearly states, food vendors must either charge a fee for non-reusable cups or containers or provide an incentive for customers. CRA recommends that this language be removed altogether, or at the very least, clearly state that this is an optional program for the restaurants, and they will not be mandated to charge disposable cup or container fee on their customers. Secondly, the CRA is extremely concerned with the proposed ordinance, including a restriction on the distribution of foodware accessories, such as straws, utensils, condiments, and napkins, or upon request only. Therefore, CRA recommends that any upon request policy be twofold. One, permitting self-service dispensers and fast casual and quick service establishments. And two, and most importantly, permit quick service establishments with drive-through service to be able to provide or offer straws and other food service accessories that the dining public will require once they leave the establishment in their vehicle. Lastly, the CRA is strongly opposed to any ban on disposable cups and containers for onsite dining. As I outlined in my May fifth letter to the mayor and council, requiring reusable foodware for all in-store dining creates serious challenges, given its base limitations in restaurants, and would likely result in increased water and utility usage. In closing, we request that city of Palm Springs consider each of CRA's recommendations. Restaurants need all our help right now, and from the local governments, to survive these financially perilous times. And we urge you to consider these measures and help the restaurants recover. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. David Lee, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
I just wanted to say how wonderful the park has been since Action Park Alliance has taken over, with all the programming, the staff. The staff is very knowledgeable and helpful when the kids and adults come to learn about skateboarding or riding bikes. And, yeah, that's it. I just want to say that since Action Park has taken over, it's been great. It's a safe place. And that's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hoi An Ip, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Hoi An Ip. I'm a volunteer with the Sierra Club. I have a comment on item 3A, footwear ordinance. I work on waste policies across the state. I can't tell you how important this ordinance is. It's so called and the state. Your banning single-use styrofoam and the plastic water gatherer require 25 cents for effective source reduction, PFA-free compostable ware, and reusables for dining. I have seen many politicians and others who actually want to see change for a restored environment for their children and grandchildren. But so many people are afraid to speak up, afraid of change, and some just say the Bay Area has done it. But what we need to know is action. No more words, no more kicking the can down the road. I also remember last July, when council was approving the scope, you stressed importance of public health. Now you mean it. Thank you so much. I, last but not least, I want to thank staff, Patrick. He has been very kind and shared information with people from different cities. Thank you for demonstrating leadership. Bye.
Bruce Hoben, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good evening to those on Zoom and those in the city council chambers. I'm Bruce Hoben. I am the co-founder of the Vacation Rental Owners and Neighbors of Palm Springs, or better known as Vron PS. I'm talking tonight about item 4A in the budget, specifically pages six and seven, which deal with adding four new vacation rental compliance officers. We submitted earlier to a written documentation asking lots of questions and issues. We hope you will have a chance to or have a chance to review that. I'm not going to repeat those again, but my main point is, the justification for these contains no data, no metrics. There are no clear-cut goals on if we add these four people, what we achieve. It's just a lot of, I want four more people. My belief in cities and the corporations, no one should approve new hirings without minimal support. You know, basically stating like, we need it for this, or we want to improve that. There is nothing in that document that contains any kind of data to justify these hirings. I would ask for you tonight to please delay the decision on bringing in these four additional people until we have some good supporting evidence as to what either vacation rentals or the community will see in what kinds of improvements, or where the problems are. There is nothing in there that states what the issues are, or the problems rather require this. So again, I ask that you don't approve this tonight, that we have a chance to review this. We're happy to spend whatever time we need doing that with you. And last but not least, I'd like to just remind you, we are on record that we would like to see vacation rental code compliance back in the office special programs. Thank you, and everybody have a great evening.
Thank you. Gabrielle Amster, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you so much. This is Gabrielle Amster. I am the Executive Director of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter. And I am calling to comment on item 1R on the agenda, approval to schedule the All Americans Alive Fourth 2021 fireworks event. And I will be reading a letter on behalf of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter Board President Tamara Hedges. Dear council members, I am writing to express my opposition to item 1R on the agenda for tonight's city council meeting. All fireworks, including large municipal displays, are terrifying to pets and wildlife. I personally have two dogs who are traumatized by every Palm Springs fireworks display, shaking and shivering for hours after the event is over, despite our efforts to block the noise. Very often, we have packed our pets into our car on the evening of July 4th and driven up Highway 74 to escape the noise. There are pets who are not bothered by the sounds, but there are the exception. They are the exception, not the rule. I am deeply concerned, too, about the many pets in our Palm Springs Animal Shelter and the terror they experience during city fireworks displays. Military veterans and victims of gun violence are also traumatized by fireworks. Additionally, fireworks are harmful to the environment and community health. From the South Coast Air Quality website, an excerpt, fireworks are known to emit high levels of particulate matter, as well as metal air pollutants, all of which can contribute to negative health effects. Breathing fine particulate matter can lead to a wide variety of cardiovascular and respiratory health effects, such as heart attacks, asthma, aggravation, decreased lung function, coughing, or difficulty breathing, and may lead to premature death in people with heart or lung disease. And last, but certainly not least, there are much better ways to spend $55,000 in our community, including helping those merchants and residents who have suffered financially from this pandemic. Spending $55,000 on a half-hour display of pollutants soaring into the air seems frivolous and out of touch with the needs of our residents. There are kinder, more sustainable, and responsible ways to celebrate democracy and the spirit of hope and unity on July 4th. I do understand the desire for a display of some sort, and ask you to please consider a lower-cost laser light bulb as an alternative way to celebrate our nation's freedom and independence. Thank you, Tamara Hedges, and thank you all very much.
Thank you. Kathy Wormick, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Anthony.
Yes.
Hello.
Hello. Kathy Wormick, you're live with council.
Hi, my name is Kathy Wormick. I live at 699 Wilson Lane, and I want to speak on two items. One is 1R, the contract with Pyro Spectacular for fireworks on July 4th. I would really prefer that we were a fireworks-free city and that we celebrated in a way that brought people together than instead of ways that just make people watch. In this, I am also especially concerned about the people and animals who are sensitive to the noise. And if we go through this contract, is it possible that Pyro Spectacular can provide quiet fireworks? I also want to speak on 1, on 4A. I'm a member of the Planning Commission, although I'm speaking as an individual. Last week, we had the Director of Special Programs in to talk with us regarding code enforcement on cannabis. What we found out is that code enforcement is woefully inadequate. It's only available from 7:00 AM till 5:00 PM, leaving the entire evening hours without enforcement, and that 90% of the complaints are from one facility. One of my concerns is that we are giving approvals to grows and manufacturing through the legacy approvals pre-2019, and we can't ensure the community that the that there is adequate enforcement. I would also like to know, before you approve this, what the hours are, what these people will be doing, and who they report to, so that there is a program that ensures that the enforcement that we have is adequate, it's in the right times, in the right hours, and being handled by the right people. Thank you so much for allowing me to testify today.
Thank you. Patricia Breslin, you're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much. Yes, my name is Patricia Breslin, greater Palm Springs Bar and Restaurant Organization and resident of Palm Springs. And good evening, if all of you are there, I can't see you right now, but Mayor Holstead, Mayor Pro Tim Middleton, council members, staff, and a special welcome to our city manager, Justin Clifton. I'm speaking to the proposed ordinance regarding reusable food service ware and plastics waste reduction. And I understand that a lot of work has gone into the proposed ordinance before you this evening. But I'd like to address some concerns, many brought up by stakeholder feedback highlighted in tonight's package. And granted, first of all, it's the timing. Granted, at the July 9th, 2020 meeting, the city council did request that the city conduct additional outreach to affected stakeholders, and the staff did so. But I'm concerned that it was done in the fall of 2020, when the pandemic was at its height, at a time when the affected stakeholders had many other concerns. I have to ask, is this the right time? Operations are not yet at normal levels. When restaurants are overburdened and financially strapped due to COVID, when full indoor dining is just starting to make a comeback, when customer reaction to additional fees may not be favorable, there are so many concerns that I think that timeline needs to be really looked at. I think also, what the changes will bring as as we move through the avenue to full recovery, I think we may see more changes to this ordinance. Restaurants were trying to survive, and they still are, and trying to recover while working within changing environment. So as restrictions lift and business starts to thrive, this is not the time to implement a new program. So thank you very much for listening, and I wish you all well. Stay safe.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment, and we were able to reach everyone today.
Thank you, city clerk. The next item is-
Madam Mayor, if I could just, uh, repeat, uh, for the public, uh, if you're speaking on, uh, non-agenda public comment, which would include the Marilyn Monroe statue, uh, that will be taken later in the evening, approximately, uh, 9:00 PM.
Thank you, city clerk. The next item is city council and city manager comments and reports. Do any city council members have a report at this time? Mayor Proton Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, on April 22nd and 23rd, League of California Cities Board of Directors, uh, met, uh, and I'm not going to give you, uh, the full rundown of two days' worth of meetings, but, uh, there was one number that surfaced, uh, during the course of the meeting that, uh, I think everyone would, uh, will find of interest. Uh, League, the League of California Cities has estimated that over the course of the last year, uh, due to COVID, municipal revenues were down by $5 billion, billion with a B, uh, on a statewide basis. 51% of that reduction in revenue statewide came from reduced TOT, Transit Occupancy Tax, uh, uh, payments, uh, and 28% of it came from sales tax reductions. Sales tax reductions actually would have been far more significantly down were it not for the fact that online sales were, did very well during last year. What that definitely means is, uh, local retailers like we have so much of here in Palm Springs suffered significantly during, uh, the COVID crisis, as well as, we can tell, our hoteliers and the municipalities that depend on the revenues from, uh, hotels and sales checks. Uh, as noted earlier, uh, next Saturday, May 15th, is Purple Heart Day across the United States. The Purple Heart is the nation's oldest military medal. Palm Springs proudly is a Purple Heart city, and to date, nearly 2 million Americans have earned the Purple Heart. Uh, and I encourage all of us, uh, to give thanks to those who have served our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council member comments or reports? Council member Corus?
Great, thanks. Uh, I just want to share, uh, two things. So one, today, Boost California, which is an initiative of the American Clean Power Association, today recognized Palm Springs as a champion for renewable energy development, and highlighted the city's continued commitment to identifying new ways to reduce its carbon footprint, promote energy efficiency, alternative energy, and engage the community in meeting its sustainability goals. And those were cited, um, as key leadership qualities, and they believe Palm Springs can serve as a model for development across the state and the nation. Uh, so, we got that news today. And one of the things they noted, um, which I didn't know, was that Solsmart, which is a U.S. Department of Energy-funded recognition program for communities that takes steps to reduce solar costs and barriers, and, uh, produce and promote the growth of a s- local solar market awarded Palm Springs with gold recognition their highest standard. Uh, so, just, uh, two acknowledgements for the work we've been doing on green energy that I wanted to share with everyone. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Are there council comments? Are there any staff reports at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things this evening. First, I'd like to let the public know that we are commencing our rollout of opening city facilities. So you know that the first of those was the library last week, which was very exciting. I understand they had a successful first-day reopen. In fact, uh, my wife and two little kids were part of that crowd and had a very good time at our library. We will continue to roll out opening over the next few weeks, really probably wrapping up, uh, mid-June, especially if we're on track for some of what the governor's office projects for reopening. So we will announce shortly some opening of select parks and recreation facilities and activities. And then in the coming weeks, probably closer to the end of the month, um, some of our administrative offices, uh, city hall, police and fire, those are a little more complicated, require, uh, some additional staffing, some rescheduling, and some things like that. But those are something to look forward to as well. And then the last of that will likely be discussing council meetings, commission meetings, and other settings where we have open-ended invitations to the public. We want to be a little more careful in those settings, of course, uh, not to deprive anybody of that service. And it might even be worth a discussion with council, considering that some of what we've learned during the pandemic with Zoom and other technology has provided some value that we might actually want to retain moving forward. So, just want to make sure people know that's coming. And then the only other item is, uh, you know that the Palm Springs International Airport had already announced that Southwest was, uh, starting a direct flight to Las Vegas, and that service commences this Sunday, so it's just worth mentioning again that exciting news. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, city manager. That is really exciting news. Um, I can't wait to take that flight. I just have a few items, uh, to report out to the city council. Um, one, I participated in KESQ's All Mayors Interview. It's a 30-minute special that's on their website, sharing how COVID and the last year has impacted all of the cities and our region. And, um, it was really interesting to hear all of the cities' perspectives on Palm Springs by and, you know, away has been impacted, um, you know, sometimes tenfold over what some of the other cities experienced in revenue loss due to loss of tourism. Um, so, it was an interesting perspective to share that. Um, I attended the Erika meeting, um, as the alternate for Mayor Proton Middleton. And, um, at that meeting, I talked to, uh, the city manager and the police chief, and I would like to request a presentation, um, by Erika at an upcoming council member to discuss our options with that agency. Um, council member Garner and I conducted interviews for our Equity and Social Justice Committee. Uh, we got a lot of applicants, especially new applicants that haven't yet served on a border commission or just getting involved in the city of Palm Springs, and people with really diverse and varied backgrounds and expertise. So really excited about those applicants. I'm thinking to everyone for applying and for your interest, and we will be bringing forward to city council, um, a recommendation for a core group of people to appoint, um, as well as possibly a budget request for a third-party administrator who might facilitate that process for us. Um, upcoming, uh, this coming Monday, um, May 10th at 9:00 AM, there's a C-VAG Coachella Valley Association of Government Public Safety Meeting. I represent the city on that board, um, and we, um, the meeting is public, so anyone who's interested in conversations about regional public safety, um, can attend that meeting. It's on Zoom. And last, I reached out to Mayors for a Guaranteed Income. This is a group started by former mayor Michael Tubbs, who, um, started a guaranteed in- income or universal basic income pilot project in Stockton that they got funded by philanthropy, and it showed really exciting results. And a number of cities across the country are doing pilots funded by philanthropy dollars to address poverty in their community. So, I would like to request that the city council consider a resolution to, um, support, um, those types of projects and policies. And I can, um, pr- work with staff to present, um, the resolution that they work with, that they've passed in dozens and dozens of other cities. Um, and that is all I have. Is there any other council member comments or reports? Seeing none. The next item is consent calendar.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Could we go back to public comment? I do have a few, uh, calls to make.
No problem. Thank you, city clerk.
Thank you. Mariel Nunez, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, thank you, um, Shmehea, um, and thank you, uh, Mayor and Mayor Proton and city council. Uh, this is for item, I believe, 1J on the Placeworks Housing Element and General Plan Contract. And I just wanted to reiterate, I know I've, I've sent this also to some of you via email, that we are really starting really late in regards to the, the housing element. Um, I'm very concerned because the draft, you know, has to be submitted by October, uh, if not, or the final plan, I think there's a draft that's an earlier deadline. And so we really need to make sure that there is enough public participation workshops, and, and that there's, and that they're building off each other's, uh, our community inputs, um, input. Um, and I had shared, you know, uh, some of the issues, right? If we don't submit things on time, that, uh, that might prevent us from state funds for housing. But yeah, like the, the different types of workshop, and I referenced, uh, what we did in Riverside, and they started in January. And so they had their first workshop on the preliminary, preliminary sites inventory, and then a second workshop about multi-, you know, uh, different scenarios based on community survey and online and interactive map tools that we gave input to staff and, and the consultant. And, and then there was a third workshop on the draft for alternative sites. And just last week, we did the fourth or fifth one that included a little bit more about environmental justice and, uh, for housing. So I really want to make sure that there's enough community input. I had talked to a couple of city council people, um, as well, and we're happy at least to hear that there might be some in-person meetings, so we really appreciate that. But these meetings definitely need to start. And, and that, and really, I would love to see what the outreach plan's going to look like, and if you're going to be approving a consultant agreement that we have all these different elements of different types of workshops, and that they're not just webinars, that there really are community input meetings, and that there's, uh, that it's done in a way that's inclusive in different locations of the city, and that, uh, interpretation and translation is included. And we would really recommend multiple surveys that's, um, building off the first survey and then the second one, you know, uh, narrowing down, uh, how we're going to be giving input. So, uh, so thank you so much for your time, and please, uh, let's be mindful of a good contract that's going to be a public, community-driven, public participation kind of process for the housing element. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jenny Foote, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Uh, hi, I'm, I'm calling to urge you to vote no on 1R. As, as horrible as COVID was and is, it has helped most of us to look at things a lot differently. Um, speaking, spending $30,000 on 20 minutes of old-school fireworks is not keeping in what we want our city to be. Yes, uh, you know, we want to get back to some degree of normalcy, but we can do this by reimagining some of our old norms. I would love to see us have an event that we would all be happy to participate in, rather than an event that we're dreading. What's being planned is $30,000 worth of air pollution, while many of us are fighting with breathing issues? What's being planned is $30,000 of noise pollution that every animal lover, pet parent, and veteran dealing with PSD in this community dreads? No matter how high I turn the TV, it will be for hours before my dogs get over their fear and come out from under the bed. The effect on the thousands of dogs and cats in our community is heartless when we can imagine and create so much more for our community. We have to think better. We have been talking for years about having a laser light show, or we could have a carnival with free food, or just a patriotic concert in the park where we could bring our blankets and food, anything except that loud noise pollution. So please, don't terrorize our veterans, our pets, our wildlife, and the animals in our care at the shelter in just trying to rush us back to normalcy. Let's have Palm Springs lead the way in the new and healthy rethinking of our future. And so I really urge you to vote no on 1R. And just one other quick thing, if you're going to put that totem pole on, on a city-owned property, please put something in about refuse and trash. Uh, the, the sign on the cone, um, is covered, the whole, the land is covered in, in trash. Um, so there needs to be some sort of cleanup with any permission to put a art installation. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that does conclude public comment. Um, I do want to note that, uh, I got a request for Charlie Lamont to, um, speak, but I have attempted to call him many, many times. Uh, it's going straight to voicemail.
Thank you, city clerk. We appreciate you being so diligent in contacting everyone and making sure everyone is heard. The next item is the consent calendar. So I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without the following items removed for separate discussion. That is items 1J, 1K, 1M, 1R. And then we have an added consent calendar, item 1T. And council member Garner is recused on 1P, and I am recused on what, 1E. So is there a motion to accept the consent calendar with those changes?
Make motion. Hold second.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Council member Corus?
Yes.
Council member Woods?
Yes.
Council member Garner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Holstead?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero with the noted recusals.
Thank you. The first item pulled for separate discussion in the consent calendar is item 1J. That is approval of amendment number two to the Consulting Services Agreement with Placeworks related to the City of Palm Springs' general plan update. I pulled this item for a staff report, please, and then if you could address some of the public comments, uh, that we heard tonight on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Uh, so the request before you is our second amendment to the, uh, contract with Placeworks, which is the company assisting the City of Palm Springs with our limited update to the general plan. Uh, so just as a bit of background, um, the city established the contract with Placeworks back in 2019, September of 2019, uh, as a part of an administrative update that the city was carrying out, uh, to certain chapters of the, the general plan. Those included the circulation element, the land use element, and the housing element. As a part of that original contract, our consultant was required to, um, provide, uh, assistance with the city, uh, in terms of meeting its compliance with the arena numbers that the state was handing down, um, planning for 2,500 units, as well as ensuring that we, uh, are complying with the state-mandated, um, uh, laws that have come down, uh, including environmental justice. Um, so, uh, that is part of the contract that was established back in September of 2019. Uh, as you recall, back in April of last year, we amended the contract, um, to expand the scope of the work. Uh, and that included the safety element, as well as, uh, addressing other state laws that were, are required to be complied with whenever we're updating, um, chapters of the general plan. Uh, so that, uh, did increase the scope of the overall project. Um, so, uh, as I, as I mentioned, we established a contract back in September of 2019. We started working on that back in December of 2019. We've, um, we held our first, uh, community-wide workshop back in February, uh, 24th of 2020. Uh, at that workshop, we had, uh, outreach to the community. We, you know, provided outreach, uh, or requested people to attend this workshop, um, which included input on all of the things that we were looking at, uh, including the vision and priorities of the city for the long-term future, uh, as well as we had individual workshops or workstations, uh, that discussed each of the three chapters that we initially were talking about, including the housing element, land use plan, and circulation plan. Uh, so at that meeting, we did receive input, and we did receive, uh, feedback from community members about, um, kind of the housing needs, what the city, uh, should plan for, for the future housing needs. Um, so we have, you know, that was back in February of 2020. Um, as a part of the update, we have been meeting with, regularly with the general plan steering committee. Um, those, the last meeting, although it was back in December, um, this past December, but we've had six total meetings with the steering committee where we've invited the public to provide input as well. Um, the, uh, so the amendment before you this evening is the, uh, as I said, the second contract amendment. Uh, what we're doing is augmenting the, uh, the budget that we had established back in September of 19 to include additional, um, additional outreach, um, including targeted outreach in, um, specific areas that have been generally underrepresented previously. Uh, so we definitely want to get the input of, uh, community members. Obviously with COVID being a factor of not being able to hold in-person meetings, that really did, um, um, limit us in terms of the- that really did, um, um, limit us in terms of the outreach that we could do. So, um, you know, with things opening back up, our plan is really to hold, uh, in-person meetings here, uh, within the next, uh, hopefully the next month, if not by the end of this month, certainly in June, uh, to receive input. Uh, we, we plan to have a minimum of three meetings at, uh, specific locations that we will be publishing on our general plan website. That, that is www.psgeneralplan.com, um, with those locations. And, um, and one of those meetings, we do expect to hold, uh, in Spanish. Uh, so that is kind of, this augment here would help us with that work. Uh, staff would be conducting that work with, um, uh, the intent of having people who, um, uh, intent of having people's assistants who are directly tied with the community, uh, various communities here in Palm Springs. The, uh, we also will be having another public, uh, community-wide workshop on the general plan here. Uh, we expect that would be also, uh, hopefully in, in June, um, obviously with COVID permitting and social distancing in place. Um, so that's kind of one main component of this amendment. Another component is the housing element. Uh, obviously the outreach that we want to do for that is, is part of that. But we also have new state law requirements with affirmatively furthering fair housing, uh, that the state has recently come out with some guidelines that we are now, uh, we now have a clear direction on what that means for the housing element. And so, uh, that requires a number of studies and assessments that we have to conduct, um, as a part of the housing element update. So we will be, so that is one reason for this, uh, amendment request as well. And finally, uh, obviously with the COVID, um, impacts, we are requesting that the, uh, contract be extended for one year to allow, uh, to allow the city to meet the required deadlines that are handed down by the state, uh, in terms of the housing element, but also ensure that we finish all of the other chapters that we are updating. Uh, so we expect that the timeline, although it was initially planned to be completed, um, at this time, uh, but with COVID, we have, have, are extending the contract for one year. So in terms of the cost, uh, what that means is the initial contract was, uh, scoped at 852,000. We had the first amendment at additional 72,000. So the proposed amendment before you this evening is $96,750. Uh, the city was able to get some, um, grant funds from the state, um, from applications that we had submitted. Uh, so while the total being, um, requested in the amendment is 96,000, the, uh, actual amount that we would need to, um, supplement, uh, would be $41,676. Um, so that really concludes my presentation, Madam Mayor, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, I just have one, um, so the timeline for outreach, I know a lot of folks might be snowbirds, especially in my district, they might live here part-time and might be gone for their summer. So is there a thought there about doing outreach and ensuring that we hear from residents in the update, um, who might be out of town for the summer and early fall?
So for the, I, I believe with our community-wide workshop, we hope to have that as a hybrid. Well, that would be also, uh, in-person and virtual. Uh, so that way people who weren't able to attend the in-person event, uh, that's the community-wide, um, uh, workshop, then those people could attend virtually.
Perfect, that's great. Thank you so much. So with that, I will make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item pulled for separate discussion is item 1K. That was pulled by Councilmember Coors. Um, the item is to approve purchase and sale agreement with Coachella Valley Conservation Commission for a 42.3 acre city-owned parcel zoned as urban reserve at East Palm Canyon Drive near Jean Autry Trail and Palm Hills Drive, referred to as the Rim Rock Property in the amount of $460,000. Councilmember Coors?
Um, I mostly wanted to pull this for the staff to just do a short report. This is great news. This is the property we acquired in the grid settlement. And, uh, we're able to get the mountain conservancy to buy it, which means we're getting income for the property and it's being maintained as permanent open space. Uh, so I don't know if there's anything else the staff wants to add to that?
Sure, Councilmember Coors, I'll also add that the appraised value was 460,000. So the city will, uh, enjoy the benefit of receiving that additional revenue.
Great. Thank you. If there's nothing else, I'll move the item.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item pulled for separate discussion from the consent calendar is item 1M. This is Palm Springs COVID-19 Small Business Assistance Program update. I asked, uh, to pull this item for a staff report for the public, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Council. Um, what you have before you is part of the city's COVID-19 Business Assistance Forgivable Loan Program, where we provide, uh, uh, $10,000 for businesses that have been most impacted by, uh, the COVID-19 pandemic. And, uh, tonight we have 11 additional businesses being recommended for addition to the, um, to the program. And with that added 11 would bring us to a total of 95 businesses. So we are close to exhausting the $1 million allocation of funds that was provided. And, uh, if you have specific questions, I'm happy to, uh, answer those.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this item? Thank you. I just pulled this item for the public. We're still getting requests or I'm getting requests from local businesses who might meet the qualifications, who aren't, um, who haven't applied or didn't apply by the deadline. So I think that there is still is interest in this program. Um, thank you to staff for really creating this program from the ground up. I think we funded a lot of businesses, um, who really desperately needed this funding. I'm really proud of our work on this and I hope that we'll continue to assess if this program needs additional funding to help more small businesses. So with that, um, this is just an update. City Clerk, do you need a vote at all?
Uh, yes.
Perfect. I will, um, move to approve this item and recommendation.
Hold a second.
Mayor Holstich.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item 1R. This is approval to schedule the All-American July 4th, 2021 fireworks event. This was pulled by Councilmember Coors.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, I was going to raise, I mean, obviously we want to see city-funded events that are free for our community. We haven't had those for a long time and, uh, you know, even though it's 9:15 at night, this is still a family, you know, friendly event. Uh, however, as, as has been raised, we've also, you know, raised over the years the concerns about the impacts of fireworks on animals, um, people with PTSD, including veterans and others, uh, just the toxins that are left, uh, from fireworks and their impact on pets, um, and other animals. Uh, so mostly I was gonna just ask if there, I know we're getting it this late because of COVID, um, but is there one time to look into, um, other events or at least bring back, um, with enough time, the potential to do something, if not this year, next year? That would be, um, you know, maybe using O'Donnell, uh, which we had a good meeting with and we're entitled to use it, uh, for events. And the last one was a long time ago, I think the 75th, um, anniversary of the city, which was a great event for residents and families. And maybe in the future, we can do something like a laser light show, um, on the mountain, picnics and entertainment, um, and other ways to celebrate before it. So I just want, I was pulling you to raise that issue, but I, obviously we started getting public comment and some emails, um, even about this year. But I don't know if there's time to find an alternative this year. So I guess that's a question for staff.
Uh, good evening. Um, we have been researching, um, alternatives. Um, we have, uh, the O'Donnell, yes, we do have that contract in place, but sometimes it could be difficult depending on the season. Uh, we'll definitely start those talks early so that we can make sure we have alternatives on the table for the following year, as well as other alternatives, uh, potentially with a different type of laser light show, um, to see what is available for the following year. Unfortunately, because it's such short notice right now, we're kind of limited with what we can offer, so.
Council, Mayor Pro Tim Middleton.
Yeah. I'd like to follow up with a question for, for staff. Uh, we're all hoping that on June 15th, we are able to move forward with, uh, uh, the governor's intention to, uh, to open things up. Uh, but it's only, uh, three weeks from, uh, June 15th to, uh, to July 4th. Are we truly confident that, uh, on the 4th of July of this year, we're going to be able to reassemble, uh, people, uh, safely, uh, together?
I believe we can do it safely, even if we do not make it to the fully open capacity. We can definitely scale it down on the parks and mark it out appropriately so that we can provide that social distancing for the families who want to participate.
Okay.
Are there any questions for city staff while Cynthia's standing there? Thank you. Other discussion? Councilmember Woods.
You know, um, just to follow up in public comment and to follow up on the comments from my fellow colleagues, it might be a good time to do a paradigm shift. I know we have promoters in town and promoters from out of town that promote here within town. They could easily put a light show together, um, you know, be it at the Bull Diamond or O'Donnell or wherever it may be. Uh, it may not be as elaborate as we could get the first year, but we're also just coming out of COVID and it seems like a perfect time to do a paradigm shift.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, I, uh, I really respect, uh, Cynthia and her, her judgment that we can do something safely, but we know it would be restricted. Uh, I'm reluctant to, uh, to step away from, uh, 4th of July celebrations as we have had them. But, uh, at the same time, uh, we know, uh, any of us who have pets, uh, just how, uh, difficult it is when there are significant amounts of fireworks. So I'd like to see us, uh, defer for one year and actually really do a study as to whether or not, uh, fireworks are something that we want to allow, uh, in our city. This is not the only time during the course of the year, uh, in which, uh, we have fireworks displays. If we're going to, uh, step away, uh, from fireworks on the 4th of July, I think we should be, uh, actually stepping back and making a determination as to whether or not they're ever appropriate in our city. And I'm, I'm not prepared to, to make that judgment now. Uh, but I, I would be prepared to defer, uh, this year's celebration in order to complete that kind of review.
Councilmember Coors.
Uh, so I, I agree with, um, those comments from Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Middleton and Councilmember Woods. I also, even if it has to be socially distanced, I really, if we don't do this, um, if it's, you know, without putting a ton of work on staff, and I want to be conscious of that as well. I really think trying to do something that's family-friendly to celebrate, um, this year is important. You know, I think, you know, especially, you know, for, uh, our youth who have not had the benefit of school this year. It's just been a really hard year for so many people. I know fireworks is hard for a lot of people too, and people have more respiratory issues, including due to COVID. But it seems like a great opportunity for us to do something. Um, and whether it's picnics in the park, um, not to start another controversy with food trucks, uh, and, um, getting some bands and maybe doing them in different parks. I just think it's an opportunity to do something, uh, that's a free event, uh, for folks and to bring people together as a community. So, and that's maybe a question, you know, for Cynthia or for the city manager on if that is something that's feasible two months from now.
Uh, we can definitely look to see what is out there and available, but at the same time, we're, everybody's in competition right now trying to find something to provide for their cities. So I'm not sure at what level or success we will necessarily have trying to reprogram something right now so late in the game.
Now, if we don't decide this tonight and it comes back to our next meeting with, if there are alternatives, is that too late to make a decision on?
For, for this fireworks contract, it would be too late. He's trying to hold out as late as he can for us. It's just really difficult to fill in these, these spots at this point.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
Other discussion?
I'd like to move to approve.
I'll second it. Council discussed having, um, having a conversation with the community about alternative events or additional events that we could add to this event. Um, do you want to include that? And maybe a friendly amendment to your motion, um, would be to bring, to approve this item and bring back for a city council discussion item with public input, um, other alternatives or options or additions we could add to this event for future years?
Uh, I'm fine to accept that as long as this doesn't turn into a much larger issue. I, I'm, I'm just trying to be very mindful of the fact that we have so many issues competing for our time. But I absolutely welcome public opinion. I just don't want it to get out of hand that we don't get other issues worked on.
Thank you. I hear that and we're working with staff on capacity and not continually adding items. And that's the goal of priority setting. So we maybe add it to our list, um, and then we discuss that in priority setting and, um, priorities in terms of agendas. Does that work?
Yes.
Is there any, so there's a motion in a second? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Coors.
Oops, sorry, no.
Councilmember Woods.
No.
Councilmember Middleton.
No.
Motion fails, three to two.
The motion fails, is there a substitute motion? And are you really going to cancel the 4th of July, two months from the event? Can we talk about sort of alter, I mean, what, what is, where are the three of you in terms of what this 4th of July would look like?
I'll share for me, I think we should look at, you know, alternative events sort of that we discussed. What else can we do? You know, family-friendly, free for the community. Uh, you know, I wasn't, didn't object to the appropriation. I think we need to do things for our community that are free. And to bring back, you know, staff can bring back some possibilities.
For this year.
Move forward with some other possibilities, right? Utilizing our parks and things for this year. Yeah. Um, and I don't think anyone's saying we should, we're canceling, um, Independence Day. I don't think we're ca, we could do that. Uh, I do think we should do things, um, and, but, you know, maybe we can do them in neighborhood parks. Maybe it's one big event. Uh, you know, O'Donnell is not really, golf courses aren't used really heavily in the heat of the summer. So we could reach out to them, but there are, we have a lot of great parks.
So I thought I just heard from staff that it would be. So I thought I just heard from staff that it would be incredibly difficult to plan and get procure anything else for the event for two months from now. I mean, what staff's capacity to, you know, design and develop an event?
Very difficult for us to try to secure anything else additionally. We are looking at some, at some possibilities for, you know, a June 15th type of opening celebration of life again. And at this point, it is a very difficult situation trying to, you know, bring life back and to put all of this work and effort into rolling out basic programming and, and its capacity and still trying to keep into these boundaries and, and all of these rules and regulations makes everything so much more difficult. And with the competing cities around in the area and in Southern California, there's only so much these companies can do because they have also had to scale back as we have.
Thank you. So I strongly oppose, I mean, we can talk about it, but oppose canceling our event for this year. We just went through a year and a half of canceled events. This is a 50-year event in the city of Palm Springs. So while we've had community conversations about, could we do silent fireworks? Could we do drone shows? Could we do light shows? Could we do events in the park? To make a sudden judgment to cancel a 50-year event at the ninth hour, two months before the event, when staff is telling us they probably can't staff up or get anything else, is, I think, really hard for the community. And we have not enough events for families here. Cynthia is doing a great job and this is just such an important event for low-income families in our city. I would hate to see us do nothing. I think it would really be a travesty.
Just that, I know we already voted and, but putting that aside, you know, a lot of people had no idea this, this wasn't on, we assumed this was canceled. This was coming to us for the first time on a consent calendar and we didn't have one comment from people saying they supported it. So I've only heard comments opposed to it. So I appreciate your view on it. I was torn, obviously, but I was persuaded by the concerns. And, you know, there are, just from I know from another city, you know, that's now starting to schedule concerts for Life Work Weekend. And there are a lot of those bands that are available because most places do fireworks. So I would hope we, we could look for that kind of entertainment with some kind of fun band in, in one of our parks.
I, I will say, nobody thinks they need to call in to defend fireworks. So I, I, my phone is lighting up now because of all the people going, what? What just happened? What do you mean they're canceling the fireworks? Nobody thought they had to call in to defend them.
So there was a motion and it failed. Is there a substitute motion for?
Can I ask a question of staff, maybe? I'm wondering if, if we can't, if we don't, you know, I, I would agree that we, if, if we can have something that's family friendly and we can bring people back to life, as Cynthia said, it would be a good thing, but I'm just wondering if it isn't worth the exercise to quickly find out what we could get for $30,000 to $50,000 in that light show in a park with maybe even a DJ. It doesn't even need to be a band at this point. And I think DJs are available where the laser show and the lights kind of go. I don't know if that's asking too much of staff, which has been insinuated or, or not. It seems like there's enough production companies out there that it might, it might happen. And if it doesn't happen, what would our fallback, fallback be?
So staff has been working on trying to secure opportunities for other events and different opportunities. The struggle right now is that a majority of these companies who are producing these alternative shows are booked, and so we can't even engage in a conversation to try to secure them for a June 15th opportunity, which will be even less for a July 4th. What we can do is talk to the fireworks vendor that we have been working with for years and see if they can reduce the size of the firework shells, which will reduce the loudness as they break in the sky. That is an option. However, that will not be as visibly available for the rest of the community who may not necessarily come out to the park. But we can definitely try to see what is still out there and available. I just, I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver and then just continue to have disappointment for our local residents and families who look forward to these things.
You know, we have, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dennis.
You know, we have, we have promoters that come to town. If we don't have somebody in town, like Jeffrey Sanker comes and puts on the White Party and we have Coachella. I don't know if we've explored any of that, Cynthia, or if that would be difficult to explore, explore in two times, Miss Cynthia.
Definitely look into it, but again, the vendor that we've been using for the last several years is because they meet the city's requirements.
How long would a procurement process like that take to use a new vendor?
I would really depend on the vendor and how quickly they could get logged into the system. Legal would need to review their contracts and all of that would need to go forward. And depending on what those companies' stipulations are, do we have to provide a deposit? Do we have to agree to other things? It would be a completely new contract that we would be looking at.
How long does that typically take?
That I don't have an answer for, but I'm sure it would take definitely several weeks to, to get approved at what would be acceptable for the city.
Thank you. Other comments? Mayor Proton Middleton.
Thank you. Clearly fireworks have been a traditional part of so many celebrations in our country for decades, but they have also been something that are very problematic for, for a number of people and extremely problematic for pets. I, I'm going to come back to what I said earlier. I think that deferring this year is a reasonable thing, step to take. It is not a permanent stepping away from fireworks, but I would like to see us actually have a discussion as to whether or not fireworks should be a part of our future at all of the various events during the course of the year where fireworks have been a, a part of the, the event.
Okay, so if there's no new motion, then the item would just fail, there would be no approval to schedule the All-American July 4, 2021 fireworks event and we would move on to the next item?
Well, I will make a motion, if I can, which is to approve the appropriation of up to $55,000 for July 4th celebration, depending on staff bringing something back to us, if that's possible, if they're able to do so.
I could second that.
Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, if I could, please, I just want to point out that your next scheduled meeting is May 27th. I, I think at minimum, if you wanted to turn Cynthia loose to try to do what she can to put together an event, you might choose to avoid coming back to council for approval because you should, really, it's going to be hard to procure contractors or, or other people, but to tell them that the decision is pending leaves an element of uncertainty just too close to July 4th, in my opinion, to, to maximize the potential to put on an event. I think she would have to be given leeway to act independently at this point.
I, I'll take what was just said as a, as a friendly amendment, even though it's not really a friendly amendment from the city manager, to authorize the expenditure to allow staff to work on, on alternate events.
That works for the second, Councilmember Woods? Further discussion? I will just say how incredibly upsetting and ridiculous this decision is. I support having a conversation about fireworks not being appropriate in the city of Palm Springs. We care about sustainability and the climate. We care about animals and people who are affected by fireworks, but to make a split decision, a split second decision when we haven't heard from the community, and I do think the majority of the community supports this event. It's a long, has a long history in Palm Springs and I think it deserves a real public process to say, what would this look like in the future? I never expected that, my phone is also blowing up. People are appalled and it's not possible to put together an event in less than, in two months with our procurement process. So I'm really upset to see the Fourth of July canceled like this and I hope that we can put together something that dessert, Palm Springs residents deserve because this fireworks show is really loved, even if it can be reimagined to be more sustainable and, and friendly to our town. It doesn't have to do that right now with no public process on consent. So I will be voting no, even though I support doing an event. So there's a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I, I would just, sorry, I, I would just echo that, Mayor. There is, other than the Fireman Fish Fry, the Fourth of July event is the one that you get the most long-term local residents at and the most families. And that's where my decision comes from. And, and yes, there's plenty to discuss, there's plenty of that, but I grew up here and, and this is one of the events that people look forward to the most.
Favor roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
No.
Mayor Proton Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
No.
Motion passes to make an appropriation of $55,000 for an event and to authorize the city manager to execute the contracts if any materialize.
Thank you. That was all from the pulled consent calendar. So the next item is item 2A, an appeal to remove conditions of approval, PLN 2 and 3, from the approval of a major architectural application to construct a new 4,276 square foot, single-family residence on a hillside parcel located at 2610 Winter Sun Drive. Can we have a staff report, please?
Madam Mayor and members of council, the item before you is a request for an appeal of a project that was approved by the planning commission. What the project proposes is the construction of a 4,200 square foot, single-family residence at the Desert Palisades development on the north end of town. The planning commission approved the project at their meeting of March the 10th on the consent calendar, subject to conditions imposed by staff, including two conditions relative to development standards. In terms of the project itself, the map on the left is of the Desert Palisades development. The parcel that's highlighted in orange is the subject parcel. You'll note that there is open space immediately adjacent to the parcel on the south. The image on the right is the site plan for the residence. You'll see that the residence surrounds a courtyard area and that depicts the layout of the house. The next two slides are images of the proposed residence. This is the view of the residence from the street within the development and then images of the courtyard area that the house surrounds. In terms of the appeal, as I had mentioned, there are two conditions of approval relative to compliance with development standards. The first is condition PLN 2, which is the resident shall not encroach into the sideyard setback area, and then PLN 3, which is a condition that limits the area of the pool cabana. In terms of the encroachment into the sideyard setback, at the southwest corner of the lot, there's a portion of the residence that encroaches just a little over four feet into the required setback area. You can see in the image on the left, the area in red is the portion of the residence that encroaches. This is not habitable space, but rather it's an architectural feature that is more or less aligned with an exterior utility closet on the residence and helps to provide shade. The zoning code allows for encroachment into required setback areas. Typically, that involves eaves of a residence, but it also allows for things such as chimneys or architectural features. However, there is a limit to how much you can encroach into a required setback. In this particular case, they would only be allowed to encroach 30 inches into that setback. And as I had mentioned, the projection is actually just a little over four feet into that setback. The other condition is relative to the size of the pool cabana. This is part of the elements surrounding the internal courtyard. The Desert Palisades specific plan limits the square footage of the floor area of a cabana or other similar accessory structure to no more than 150 square feet. This proposed pool cabana is about 175 square feet in area, and that does not include the overhang of the roof for the cabana. So in terms of the appeal, staff is recommending denial of the appeal as these two elements do not comply with the development standards. We would note that the appropriate process, rather than the appeal, would be for the applicant to file a variance. One of the reasons that staff did not suggest this when the plan initially came forward to us is because we don't feel that it would necessarily meet the criteria for approval of a variance. And so we didn't want to send the applicant down the wrong road to file an application that ultimately the planning commission may not approve. So again, that is the basis for our recommendation. That includes my staff report. The property owner and their architect is available and will be able to answer any questions you might have about their design. And staff is available to answer any questions you might have about compliance issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Fag. Are there any questions for city staff? I don't see any questions. Mayor Proton Middleton.
The applicant, if I read their notes correctly, argues that because the shade structure is an open pattern, that it's not really a cabana and therefore should not be subject to the 150 square foot limit. Could you comment on, on that, please?
I don't think that argument is necessarily without merit. Typically, when we talk about accessory structures, we imagine a structure that has a solid roof. And so as we're looking at issues such as compliance with setback requirements or lot coverage requirements, we would typically count only those items that have a foundation and an enclosed roof. So if this were to be the case where it is only an open lattice structure, an argument might be made that therefore it is not out of compliance, if you will, with the limitation.
Would that change your recommendation that we not approve that particular variance if in fact we received testimony this evening that it would be an open weave pattern?
That possibly might be the case. I think there would need to be some type of standard that in terms of the openness of the structure, it needs to be 50% or greater to be exempted from that requirement.
All right, thank you.
Other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none at this time, I would like to open the public hearing. The applicant will have up to five minutes to present their case. If requested, the appellant will have two additional minutes at the end for rebuttal. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes.
To be exempted from that requirement.
City clerk? Let's see, hi, welcome. So the applicant, welcome, I think you just entered our Zoom room. I think you just entered our Zoom room. You have five minutes to present your case.
Mr. Edwards, you can begin. And you're on mute. Mr. Edwards, you're on mute.
I can start if Jay, you're having trouble. Trouble there. So.
I got that. I'm so sorry.
Appreciate it. It was great.
Okay, your time is going to begin now, and you have five minutes for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Jay Edwards. My husband, Mason Funk, and I wanted to provide a face with this particular project at 2610 Winter Sun Drive. We've been real estate owners in Palm Springs for 12 years in the Sunmore neighborhood, and as the result of COVID and quarantine, we ended up spending many months in Palm Springs this past year. It became clear that Palm Springs is where we want our permanent home. We sold our beloved home in the Silver Lake neighborhood of Los Angeles to make our dream a reality. And one of the things we love about Palm Springs is the architectural legacy, and we want to contribute to that legacy. We hired Sean Lockyer and his wonderful staff at Studio AR&amp;D, whose work we feel is both beautiful and respectful of the landscape on which it sits. We come here this evening to ask that you please reconsider our appeal about the setback deviation and the size of the shade overhang that's being called a cabana. Hillside building is tricky, we've learned, but we've spent nearly eight months designing the home of our dreams with strong consideration of rules and regulations that govern such projects. We were happy when the Architectural Advisory Committee approved our plans with a hearty recommendation. We ask that you grant our appeal regarding the setback because the deviation is extremely minor, but to change it, we feel would ruin the design integrity of the entire west side of our home. One of the reasons we picked this particular lot is that there is no neighbor to the west of our lot. There is green space for hundreds of feet. It is a very small setback, we feel, deviation, and most importantly, the deviation would not affect anyone from either a safety or aesthetic perspective. Regarding the cabana, we feel this is a misnomer as the structure is attached to the house and within the setback. It is an open slatted roof shade structure. We also feel a deviation would not affect anybody. Thank you for your time in considering our appeal, and we ask that you please let us build the house of our dreams as designed. I would now like to have Sean Lockyer, our architect, provide added detail.
Thanks, Jay. So I think Jay did a fine job there and covered most of the points I was hoping to make, but I'll just add a few items here. So one of the things that occurred at the Planning Commission hearing, this was after coming off of a great presentation at AAC. And AAC, you know, voted to approve this project, and so we thought, wow, this is great. They were very specific. Chairman Jake White pointed out that the project was nicely done, that minor deviations on a hillside property are appropriate. He further stated that the deviations could be approved because there are strong design elements at these locations. So I think then what happened to Planning Commission, which is why we're here today, is we kind of, you know, the project got moved to the consent calendar just before that Planning Commission meeting, and so we weren't really able to even have a voice there. So we got approved with these conditions just minutes prior to the Planning Commission hearing, and so the conditions were kind of in there. And it's almost like we felt like there was a little bit of a rope-a-dope there, and so we wanted to just be heard on these items and make a case and a presentation to somebody and have them hear us that could potentially approve this. I think all's been captured that we wanted to capture. Jay mentioned that, you know, not all the detail, primarily on that west facade, we go further than, to respect the setback by, along that 109 lineal feet of the west facade, we were beyond the setback, two foot six to 27 feet, further than required. So that's a good thing. I don't mean we're in violation by 27 feet. We're respecting and giving more yardage to that side. So I think that creating some push and pull on these hillside irregular-shaped lots is something that needs to be looked at on a case-by-case basis and look at some of these irregularities and make some, you know, minor adjustments and to allow some of these that I think, especially if they, if they're not such damaging items and they're not ridiculous, which I don't think these requests are. I think it's fair to do that with this particular neighborhood and these particular hillside developments that have these very irregular-shaped lots. That was the basis of our argument. I would agree, Jay stated correctly. It is 50% open, I believe. We'll make darn sure that roof is over on that cabana chalice area. I think we have inch-and-a-half diameter peel or branches that we're trying to use there and keeping.
Mr. Lockyer? Your time is concluded.
Okay. Thanks.
And Madam Mayor, just to note, we do not have any public comment for this item.
Thank you. So there's no public comment. The appellant, you have two minutes in rebuttal if you'd like to use it to continue. If not, then we will close the public comment if there are no additional speakers.
I don't mind yielding my time. I kind of said what I had to say there, so thank you again.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here today. So city clerk, there are no additional speakers, correct?
Correct.
Perfect. The public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from city council? So since we have the appellant in our Zoom room, I will first go to questions for the appellant, if that works for council, and then we can deliberate together once you leave the Zoom room, if that works. So are there any questions for the appellant? I don't see any. Thank you so much for joining us. Is there a way for IT to put them in a separate room and we can bring them back if anything comes up? Otherwise, they can listen to the meeting. Mayor Proton Middleton.
I'm sorry. I did have a question for the applicant.
Thank you. We'll bring them back. I did ask.
You did. I thought someone else was going first, so I misheard. Sean, this is probably for you. I just want to confirm that, as the director said, that you would erect a shade structure or cabana, depending on how one wants to refer to it, that would be at least 50% open weave.
You're on mute.
That's correct, Lisa.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the appellant? Councilmember Woods.
You're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards, for wanting to invest further in the city of Palm Springs and for choosing an excellent area. I guess the question would be for Sean, is are you looking to go five feet into the 10-foot setback with the encroachment? Am I understanding that correctly?
If I recall correctly, it's shy of five feet, but close to it, four, four and change.
So it's almost half of the required setback is being consumed by the cabana?
Which sounds ridiculous if you put it like that. It's one of those things where, to me, I have to really look at the, at the site plan myself to see where that little button jogs out there at that corner. But to answer your question, yes, that's true.
And then can you talk to me about how close that brings the house or the cabana to the trail?
I'd have to look into that more, but that trail is on the other side of a berm. That berm width is about 40 feet, and that trail is substantially further on the other side of that. So if I can have a moment, I can try to pull that out.
I just couldn't tell from the packet how far the trail was from the proposed encroachment.
Understood. Yeah, difficult to see there. Bear with me. That's actually, goes much further than our site plan even shows, which our site plan goes quite a bit further out than that property line, so it might take me a minute to pull up the image for that. Put you on mute for.
While you're doing that, congratulations on your recent work in Desert Palisades, Sean.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
While you're looking it up, congratulations on your decent, your recent work in Desert Palisades.
Thank you. Glad you were able to see it. How far out is that?
Madam Mayor, if I could just interject, if we could have IT bring the PowerPoint slides back up, perhaps I can go to the site plan and give you a better estimate that way. So this is the area of the residence that encroaches into the sideyard setback area. Again, it's only a corner of the residence that does encroach. And then let me go to the site plan. So on the left, the site is shown in orange there. You'll notice that to the southwest of the site, there's a significant gap between the parcel and the adjacent parcel to the south. That gap is approximately 30 to 40 feet in width between those two lots, and the trail is intended to run in between those properties. Just using my best guess, I would say that the encroachment is probably a good 10 to 12 feet away from the edge of the trail.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garner? Do I actually have a question for staff? Flynn, can you just explain again? I saw on the, if they were to go through a process to request a variance, what would that look like? Would we still kind of end up in the same place that we are now?
We might to a certain degree. In terms of a variance, there are basically three criteria that you have to meet. One of those is relative to the uniqueness of the site not being like any other site. In terms of its size and shape and area, this is substantially the same as other sites within Desert Palisades. So it makes it difficult for us to say that this is a unique site. So that's one of the reasons why, again, staff couldn't recommend them filing a variance application, just because we didn't think it would meet that criterion of uniqueness.
So to the applicant, can you explain why the site is unique? And can you explain why other designs wouldn't work on this site and why you really need to, you know, this variance or to, you know, you need this action really to build the house that you want to build?
Yeah. Now, before you speak, is it appropriate for me to address something very quickly?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's important to know that behind, on the west side of our property is not just a berm, it's a big, what has become a stone wall that then dips down. And the trail that you're describing, whereas it may technically be 10 feet from the variance, would not be, you would not see our house from the trail because there's this big hill, if you will, of olders that have created this beautiful berm, which is one of the reasons we selected this particular lot. So not only is it 30 feet across, it's also down and out of view from, we can't see the trail and the trail wouldn't be able to see our home. Thank you.
Yeah. Also, we just, it came up with that measurement you had asked for. We've come up with 35 feet from that corner to the, to the edge of the surface of that trail. I'd say the site's unique because it has a very irregular shape and plan when you look at it. Not typical, like an infill lot where city planning and zoning has laid out a series of rectangles. These are very irregular-shaped lots. So there is some, between the views, the roads and the lot lines themselves, we do quite a bit of twisting and rotating of these plans in and around these sites of, on these hillside developments. And I would say that in combination with the terrain, grading always has something to do with this, these projects. And so here, again, you know, grading kind of dictates and terrain does where we locate a garage, and that's kind of the design we begin with. And then we kind of go from there with how to get into a pantry, a kitchen, a great room, and fan outs of bedrooms or a guest wing, a private wing, that sort of thing. So all of these things in conjunction kind of led us to where we are today. That particular corner, it's not so much that the setback is needed on the west, although it is, because the west is kind of the supporting structure, but it's really the south facade that creates this kind of push and pull and void and solid along the south facade perpendicular to that west facade in that particular corner, which is why we feel like that jut out, that appendage of the building there is really required, because without that, we could reduce that south setback, bring it further north or that south line of the facade. And if we did that, what we'd end up with is very flat facade, which you can't really see until you look at the renderings, particularly the south elevation on the left side, which would be the west side in that corner. And so with the flattening of that facade, it would just become a very, a much flatter, uninteresting building, not provide the shade that's required there, and again, look very kind of mundane and simple and not so great. So that's one of our main arguments, is that, you know, this particular junction down there at the southwest corner truly helps this depth and play in the aesthetics of the south facade, which is the one that's viewable from the more public trail.
Thank you. Other questions? Mayor Proton Middleton and then Councilmember Corse.
I was going to make this as a comment, but I think it's better to put it into a question. What I'm struggling with on moving into the 10-foot setback is, it's not so much the trails, and I certainly get the, that the house is largely going to be not visible to others. But every lot in Desert Palisades is unique. It is, as you said, a very unique place. This is one of the first homes that goes in. If we approve a, moving into the setback here, I am very fearful that we are going to have requests to move into the setback on a extremely large number of homes that are being proposed for Desert Palisades, and they will use this as an example of why they should be granted that. So help me get over that fear.
Yeah. Well, soon, projects won't go to city council at all in Desert Palisades, so this is, there's one thing that we're going to, we're going to skip that process, I believe, and Flynn could correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know that they'll go to planning. I feel like Architecture Advisory Committee will be spending much more time reviewing these setbacks and restrictions and that sort of thing. But I'm with you. I knew that would be a discussion that would be brought up tonight, that, you know, potentially this would set a precedent for other folks in the future, and I'm not sure that that's a terrible thing. I think that occasionally I am arguing that these are so irregular and the terrain is so drastic that we oftentimes have 30 feet of elevation change in a somewhat, what I would call a small lot. And sometimes that's going to require a little bit of creativity and thinking outside the box, both on the architect's part, to try to stay within those guidelines as much as possible, but then where it may not be possible, um, just have an open mind about it, and, and look at them on a case-by-case basis, wi- within reason. Hopefully, a lot of that can be handled at staff level, AAC, and so forth, but, um, I'm not sure that's the worst thing in the world in this, in these particular projects. I'd just say hillside in general, but particularly Desert Palisades, where there is a lot of irregularity because of that road and the way those lots were planned.
Thank you.
Other questions for the appellant? Councilmember Corz?
Actually, mine are, mine are for staff and comments, not questions to the appellant.
Thank you. Would Council like to move to questions for staff and discussion with the appellant in a room, um, or do you wanna continue like this? Does work? Councilmember Corz, if you wanna ask your questions of staff, because it might raise questions for the appellant, and then we can do deliberations together.
Um, this is probably for the city attorney as much as, uh, the planning director, but so, um, so my problem here, one is, uh, which is not the problem part, it's gorgeous, um, and I totally understand your, and your explanations of why you wanna do it, makes sense to me. I do have some of the same concerns Mayor Pro Tim Middleton raised, but I'm particularly concerned, um, because we do have a specific plan for Desert Palisades. And so, for us to approve something that violates it, it's just sort of a message to everyone, you know? I mean, we can't just, in my view, and I saw it with the city attorney, and it strikes me that the only way we can do this, staying within sort of our legal way, is through a variance. You know, it is on a trail, there are, I, I see reasons, I could see a variance here, but it strikes me, just from a legal perspective, you know, we get sued a lot when we do things that violate specific plans, and we don't tend to do that, because those are done for a reason, and, uh, and they do set precedents, but, um, so I'm just asking, the city attorney is one option here, if we approve this, the appeal, subject to, on condition that the variance gets, get approved. We can't vote on the variance yet, because you don't have it, but I, I'm curious if that's the right, what is the best legal way, if we wanna try and make this work, to do this? That's my question. There we go.
Councilmember Corz and, and council, um, in my opinion, I think the, the correct legal procedure would be to direct the applicant to, to file a variance application and allow that to be acted on by the planning commission. These setback requirements are part of the specific plan, which are zoning standards, uh, and California and, and city law provide for, uh, an opportunity through the variance procedure to deviate from those zoning standards. Your suggestion of, of approving the appeal, uh, subject to a variance application, uh, I suppose that is a, a kind of a creative way to, 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 uh, move the project along. I, I'm a bit concerned about what message that might send to our planning commission, though, in terms of what the council is really asking for, uh, with regard to the variance, and so, um, it, it's, it's creative, but sometimes with creativity comes risk.
Understood, and, uh, maybe not for now, but I think the applicant raised the issue of if this, in the future, just goes to AAC, um, that there's, you know, legal counsel there, or whatever is needed to make sure we're not violating, um, our specific and general plan with their decisions on architecture, so, um, I just wanted to note that. So, that's, that's my main concern here, is, I mean, I do agree with Mayor Pro Tim on the precedent, and is everyone gonna make that argument unless you can argue this is specific? Or if the specific plan for Desert Palisades is creating a problem with getting houses built there that work, then we should be re-looking at that. My, my real challenge is voting to approve something that's against the specific plan. So, that's just my, my comment for the rest of council, and I appreciate that from the city attorney. And I don't, I guess, let me just ask one more question, the, the attorney or, uh, planning director. The concern on how planning commission might consider this, did they, did the planning commission say they didn't think a variance was a possibility, or they were just simply coming up with a condition because they, it didn't fit the specific plan, right? Have they ever looked at this from a variance point of view yet?
No, the planning commission has not looked at the aspect of the variance. They discussed the item, or actually, rather, didn't discuss the item, it was part of the consent agenda, and so they didn't talk about the specifics of the case. They reviewed the recommendation of the Architectural Advisory Committee, and again, put it on the consent calendar, as they didn't feel there were any issues relative to the design of the residence.
Okay, and they were the ones weighing in on the specific plan issue, the, the planning commission?
Yes, they found that it more or less met the requirements of the specific plan with the conditions imposed by staff.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Wood?
Um, I want to thank you for the, um, Mayor Pro Tim, and for, um, Councilmember Corz, I think you made legitimate points, do we change the specific plan? Do we allow for a variance? But I wanna explore one other thing that, um, Mayor Pro Tim had brought up earlier with legal counsel and with our director, is if, if it were to be, if, if it were to be less than fifty percent enclosed, would we be able to approve this without worrying about a variance, or without worrying about changing the specific plan?
No, we would not. Keep in mind that there's two issues here. Relative to the pool cabana, uh, it's larger than the square footage that's allowed if we consider it to be a roofed structure, and that's one of the reasons why we're suggesting that, uh, if it only has a trellis structure, it's less than fifty percent, uh, or greater than fifty percent open, we wouldn't really consider that to be a roofed structure. The pool cabana issue, I believe, could be something that you could approve as a part of this appeal this evening, in terms of the interpretation of, is this an enclosed structure or not? The other issue deals with the encroachment of the residence into the side yard setback, uh, and the architectural projection on the southwest side of the house. That is the one in particular where a variance is really the appropriate method for approving that encroachment, as it is currently designed.
Thank you.
I have a question. Can we, I mean, I know we have a formal process, and we require applicants to follow that. Um, I know that there is time and expense and delay, you know, in requesting an additional application when they've come this far, and they're already at city council, so could you explain if we could consider this now, um, similar to a variance, um, or direct it back to planning commission as a variance application, or, you know, if not, what would be the timeline and expense for the appellant in moving through that process?
Let me go ahead and address that, Madam Mayor. In terms of the process, here's what I might recommend, uh, that as the city council will go ahead and, uh, address the issue of the pool cabana, uh, with a requirement that it be at least fifty percent open in terms of the roof structure, that one we can take care of this evening. You might also recommend that the applicant file a variance application for the portion of the structure that encroaches into the setback. In terms of the timeframe, we could have that before the planning commission at their first meeting in June, and so that issue could be decided, uh, within thirty days. In terms of the expense, the variance application is approximately twenty-five hundred dollars plus the notification fee. If you so direct, what we might do is, uh, subtract the amount that the applicant has paid for the appeal from the variance application fee, uh, so that way there isn't any additional expense over and above the variance application.
Thank you. Would it be beneficial to do that analysis for staff and for the planning commission? Or why couldn't we just consider this appeal and those issues now?
As your city attorney has directed you, the appropriate method to waive, uh, or vary from a standard in the specific plan is through a variance application. Uh, and so, it's not merely a matter of interpretation, uh, but rather, it's a specific process under state law that we should follow in terms of granting an exception from a setback requirement. And so, for that reason, a variance application is the appropriate method to go forward, rather than trying to do that as part of the appeal.
Were they advised of that initially, when they applied for this project? Or why is that just coming up now?
Again, as I had mentioned as part of my presentation, we did not recommend that the applicant file a variance, because we as staff did not feel it would meet the criteria. You've heard testimony this evening, uh, that both the applicant, and I believe, uh, council members have also expressed that there are certain aspects of the site that may be unique. That is the primary criterion that we were concerned about from a staff level, so again, that's why we didn't mention it to the applicant.
Thank you. I know your staff works really hard, so thank you for describing that for us. Are there other questions or comments from councilmembers? I don't see any. Um, thank you to the appellant for being here, we appreciate it. Uh, we'll go ahead and put you in a Zoom room, or you can log off, and then we'll go ahead and deliberate. Thank you so much for, um, investing in.
Next year's time, everybody.
So, is there further discussion or a motion by city council? Councilmember Corz?
I'll try and make a motion, if I understand everything, and the city attorney and planning director jump in. Um, so, I don't know, the right way to do it is we approve the appeal conditioned on, um, a variance application being approved, and, you know, semantics that we're waiving the variance fee by crediting back the cost of the appeal, up to twenty, of the cost of the variance fee. Or we just waived the variance fee, seems easier, but either way, however staff would like us to do that is fine with me. So, they're not paying anything extra as a result.
And Councilmember Corz, I would-
Thank you, staff, can you-
Sorry, Madam Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Corz, I would just clarify that the issue of the pool cabana is addressed this evening under the appeal. The only item that the planning commission will be considering under the variance is the encroachment of the southwest portion of the residence into the side yard setback. And I will also clarify, we can take that to the May twenty-sixth Planning Commission meeting, so we'll be able to get it done more quickly than I had originally estimated.
Great, those are all acceptable. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton?
And we'll second that, uh, provided, uh, uh, the cabana is in fact being approved, uh, uh, this evening. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Councilmember Woods?
Yes, um, clarification, so we're gonna approve the pool cabana as fifty percent enclosed, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Any other discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please, city clerk?
Councilmember Corz?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton? Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Council will need a break, or do we wanna continue through the next item? Take a five-minute break? Okay.
We never make five, let's be ten, it'd be bad.
Let's say ten, and then we'll really be ten and on time for the public. So, we will go ahead and take a ten-minute break and, um, come back at seven fifty.
So the first point was the effective date. We set an effective date of January 1, 2022, looking ahead to a time when we felt that COVID might be largely behind us and would provide enough transition time for businesses to make the changes necessary. And I did want to note that the city, or I'm sorry, the county of San Mateo passed their ordinance, which was similar to this one, in February of 2020, so just pre-COVID. And they had an implementation or an enforcement timeline of January, or I'm sorry, March of 2021, and they just pushed that implementation timeline to March of 2022. So they would be on kind of a similar timeline to us. The ban on polystyrene foodware is comprehensive, so it's all polystyrene, both foam and rigid forms. There are over 100 cities or jurisdictions in California that have polystyrene bans. A majority of them are for the foam version, but some of them are also addressing the rigid form. So it's labeled as a number six on the rigid plastics that you might see. The compostable material should meet ASTM standards and be free of fluorinated chemicals. And this is, requirement is twofold. So one is to make sure that things that are labeled as compostable are in fact potentially compostable if they make it into the right system, and that they're free of fluorinated chemicals. And this has to do with PFOA and PFOS, which is a term that people may have been hearing about, but they're one of these forever chemicals that lingers on basically forever. And so we want to make sure that those are not included in any material, certainly that would be composted. But even if it did go to a landfill, we want to make sure that it's not in that either. Reusable foodware is required onsite. So again, this would eliminate disposable foodware that's used onsite in replacement for reusable foodware, as well as allowing for things like paper wrappings or foil wrappings to hold food. So there are some minor exceptions there for that requirement. Foodware accessories are only available on request across all platforms. So this includes things that would be ordered online. There should be an affirmative way for people to request that material. And this should encompass an affirmative response to a question as well. So we want to make sure that it's written in a way that it's not just people asking for it, but it's also if you are asked about it and you respond affirmatively or negatively as to whether or not you want it. So again, based on the comments that we received, I want to make sure that it says that. And then the other thing is that it does include a provision for having accessories available in a self-service area, as was mentioned by one of the callers. And so again, if you're using reusable foodware onsite, there shouldn't be a need for that for onsite dining, but rather for to-go orders and takeout, which is where that is noted in the ordinance. Straw should be non-plastic. There is a charge for disposable containers and cups and an incentive for reusables. So again, the intent here was in response to your comments back in July of last year, we wanted to make sure there was an option for people to provide an incentive for reusables as well as potentially a charge for disposable containers. So that was revised based on the July comments. There is a provision in here for condiment requirements, so reusable paper and bulk dispensers are required for those. And so this is a condition that was optional in one of the other ordinances that we saw, and it is included as a requirement here. And then single-use plastic bags would be banned for takeout orders. And so that would be a revision to our current ordinance on plastic bags that allows for it in certain food settings. So we would certainly be implementing a variety of incentives and assistance programs should this go forward. We would definitely be developing a compliance roadmap and guidance for restaurants on how to implement this. This would most likely be done in conjunction with SB 1383 implementation, and those two things could be combined. We would continue our sustainability scholarship program and focus that on restaurants and make sure that we are targeting particular restaurants that might need the most assistance with that. And we could look at the cost or the grant ceiling for that as we go forward, depending on what we feel the need might be. Providing technical assistance in the form of a consultant to help people transition. Very often, these kinds of ordinances require an individualized approach, so we would need to take a look at people's operations and figure out what's the best solution for them that would be compliant. We could potentially coordinate bulk purchases, if that's possible, and then do a reusable cup and a reusable container pilot. This is something we tried to do through a grant through the state, and we're not successful in doing that, but we have had a discussion with a reusable cup and container company, and this is certainly something that the Palm Springs market, I think, would be really primed for. So those are the kinds of things that we could do should this go forward. I wanted to just give you a couple of examples. So in this setting, we've got a restaurant that's using a reusable tray to serve their food on, some paper to probably package the hamburger, and a paper container for the fries, and then a cup and straw situation with the plastic packets. So the two things that are wrong about that would be the plastic packets, as well as the disposable cup for onsite use. So for this restaurant, they would be looking at some fairly simple fixes in terms of having some sort of bulk container for their condiments and also some reusable glasses for onsite use. So those are the kinds of changes we would be looking at there. Most likely, fairly minimal costs, and some of those costs would be offset by the savings from not having to buy some of the disposable ware. In another example, this is probably a worst-case scenario where we would have everybody or the restaurant using all polystyrene foam containers. These are, of course, the least-cost option for restaurants to use. All of that would need to be changed. They would need to move to a reusable plate and silverware. They would have to probably install some sort of a dishwashing system, as well as get reusable glasses. This particular washing unit is about $1,700, so really here we're looking at a fairly significant investment, assuming that people have the space for these kinds of equipment. And that does make me mention the exemptions that are also included in the ordinance. We do have a feasibility exemption, so if there isn't enough space for something like this, a facility would be exempt. We also have a hardship exemption, so if we feel like the facility is being unduly burdened by the cost of this particular ordinance, we could waive it or portions of it for them. So that completes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions, take comments, and solicit ideas.
Thank you. Question for Patrick. Councilmember Corz.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of things. I'll just go in order on page 17 of the staff report. Section 5.87.002, onsite food, beverage, and food, sorry, onsite food and beverage consumption. We talk about the waiver there and the ordinance as being section 5.87.008, and I think it's supposed to be 5.87006. So just a little, that's just a little cleanup, unless I'm missing. I don't see an 008.
Correct. Yes, thanks.
Just wanted to note that. Yeah, just so we get that cleaned up when we bring this on second reading, assuming we pass it. I think right below that, section B in 5.8702, non-reusable paper food wrappers, sleeves, bags. Is that like the universe of things? I just want to make sure it's clear to the businesses what we're actually saying here, because some people said, well, if the burger's not on paper, but it's on a, you know, paper plate that is similar in size, is that okay? And so I just want to make sure we're really clear on that. So I don't know if that's a question or just a comment for second reading, but do you have some thoughts on, can we have an addendum that sort of gives a more exhaustive list or gives them, and then, you know, so the city manager can, you know, add or take things away? I'm just trying to figure out how we do this, so people understand it, I guess.
Right. That's a great point. And I think we struggled a little bit in this ordinance of being comprehensive but not being overly so. So, yeah, I can take a look at that language and see if there's anything else we might include in there, but also maybe include some language in there that allows us some flexibility, too.
Okay, thanks. On the next page, page 18 of the staff report is 5.87.005, promoting the use of reusable beverage cups and food containers. So are they required to charge a fee or not? Because as I was mentioning, this-
Implementation timeline to March of 2022. So they would be on kind of a similar timeline to us. The ban on polystyrene foodware is comprehensive, so it's all polystyrene, both foam and rigid forms. There are over 100 cities or jurisdictions in California that have polystyrene bans. A majority of them are for the foam version, but some of them are also addressing the rigid form. So it's labeled as a number six on the rigid plastics that you might see. The compostable material should meet ASTM standards and be free of fluorinated chemicals. And this is requirement is twofold. So one is to make sure that things that are labeled as compostable are in fact potentially compostable if they make it into the right system and that they're free of fluorinated chemicals. And this has to do with PFOA and PFOS, which is a term that people may have been hearing about, but they're one of these forever chemicals that lingers on basically forever. And so we want to make sure that those are not included in any material, certainly that would be composted. But even if it did go to a landfill, we want to make sure that it's not in that either. Reusable foodware is required onsite. So again, this would eliminate disposable foodware that's used onsite in replacement for reusable foodware, as well as allowing for things like paper wrappings or foil wrappings to hold food. So there are some minor exceptions there for that requirement. Foodware accessories are only available on request across all platforms. So this includes things that would be ordered online. There should be an affirmative way for people to request that material. And this should encompass an affirmative response to a question as well. So we want to make sure that it's written in a way that it's not just people asking for it, but it's also if you are asked about it and you respond affirmatively or negatively as to whether or not you want it. So again, based on the comments that we received, I want to make sure that it says that. And then the other thing is that it does include a provision for having accessories available in a self-service area, as was mentioned by one of the callers. And so again, if you're using reusable foodware onsite, there shouldn't be a need for that for onsite dining, but rather for to-go orders and takeout, which is where that is noted in the ordinance. Straw should be nonplastic. There is a charge for disposable containers and cups and an incentive for reusables. So again, the intent here was in response to your comments back in July of last year, we wanted to make sure there was an option for people to provide an incentive for reusables as well as potentially a charge for disposable containers. So that was revised based on the July comments. There is a provision in here for condiment requirements. So reusable paper and bulk dispensers are required for those. And so this is a condition that was optional in one of the other ordinances that we saw, and it is included as a requirement here. And then single-use plastic bags would be banned for takeout orders. And so that would be a revision to our current ordinance on plastic bags that allows for it in certain food settings. So we would certainly be implementing a variety of incentives and assistance programs should this go forward. We would definitely be developing a compliance roadmap and guidance for restaurants on how to implement this. This would most likely be done in conjunction with SB 1383 implementation, and those two things could be combined. We would continue our sustainability scholarship program and focus that on restaurants and make sure that we are targeting particular restaurants that might need the most assistance with that. And we could look at the cost or the grant ceiling for that as we go forward, depending on what we feel the need might be. Providing technical assistance in the form of a consultant to help people transition. Very often, these kinds of ordinances require an individualized approach. So we would need to take a look at people's operations and figure out what's the best solution for them that would be compliant. We could potentially coordinate bulk purchases if that's possible and then do a reusable cup and a reusable container pilot. This is something we tried to do through a grant through the state, and we're not successful in doing that. But we have had a discussion with a reusable cup and container company, and this is certainly something that the Palm Springs market, I think, would be really primed for. So those are the kinds of things that we could do should this go forward. I wanted to just give you a couple of examples. So in this setting, we've got a restaurant that's using a reusable tray to serve their food on, some paper to probably package the hamburger and a paper container for the fries, and then a cup and straw situation with the plastic packets. So the two things that are wrong about that would be the plastic packets as well as the disposable cup for onsite use. So for this restaurant, they would be looking at some fairly simple fixes in terms of having some sort of bulk container for their condiments and also some reusable glasses for onsite use. So those are the kinds of changes we would be looking at there. Most likely, fairly minimal costs, and some of those costs would be offset by the savings from not having to buy some of the disposable ware. In another example, this is probably a worst-case scenario where we would have everybody or the restaurant using all polystyrene foam containers. These are, of course, the least-cost option for restaurants to use. All of that would need to be changed. They would need to move to a reusable plate and silverware. They would have to probably install some sort of a dishwashing system as well as get reusable glasses. This particular washing unit is about $1,700. So really, here, we're looking at a fairly significant investment, assuming that people have the space for these kinds of equipment. And that does make me mention the exemptions that are also included in the ordinance. We do have a feasibility exemption, so if there isn't enough space for something like this, a facility would be exempt. We also have a hardship exemption. So if we feel like the facility is being unduly burdened by the cost of this particular ordinance, we could waive it or portions of it for them. So that completes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions, take comments, and solicit ideas.
Thank you. Question for Patrick, Councilmember Ford.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of things. I'll just go in order on page 17 of the staff report. Section 5.87.002, onsite food, beverage, and food, sorry, onsite food and beverage consumption. We talk about the waiver there and the ordinance as being section 5.87.008, and I think it's supposed to be 5.87.006. So just a little, that's just a little cleanup unless I'm missing. I don't see an 008.
Correct, yes, thanks.
Yeah, just so we get that cleaned up when we bring this on second reading, assuming we pass it. I think right below that were section B in 5.8702, nonreusable paper food wrappers, sleeves, bags. Is that like the universe of things? I just want to make sure it's clear to the businesses what we're actually saying here because some people said, well, if it's, the burger's not on paper, but it's on a, you know, paper plate that is similar in size. Is that okay? And so I just want to make sure we're really clear on that. So I don't know if that's a question or just a comment for second reading, but do you have some thoughts on can we have an addendum that sort of gives a more exhaustive list or gives them, and then, you know, so the city manager can, you know, add or take things away? I'm just trying to figure out how we do this so people understand it, I guess.
Right, that's a great point. And I think we struggled a little bit in this ordinance of being comprehensive but not being overly so. So, yeah, I can take a look at that language and see if there's anything else we might include in there, but also maybe include some language in there that allows us some flexibility, too.
Okay, thanks. On the next page, page 18 of the staff report is 5.87.005, promoting the use of reusable beverage cups and food containers. So are they required to charge a fee or not? Because as was mentioned, the staff report said they can charge a fee to recoup the extra costs or more even as an incentive, and the ordinance had said they must. And I thought when we talked about this, but it was a long time ago and, you know, start of COVID, so I thought we wanted it to be optional or at least a start that they could charge to see if they wanted. But we were, we had some concerns also about the extra cost. And, you know, in some places, fast food, you know, that may be the only place, you know, homeless residents are getting food. So I just wanted to, I remember we discussed it, I don't remember where we landed, but I just want to see what you recall or if you watched the tape, since this is inconsistent from the staff report versus this.
Yes, so the intent here was that it be an either-or. So they either charge the additional disposable cup fee or they provide an incentive for reusables. So it was an either-or option for that requirement.
Okay, so if someone brings their own cup, they could, that's why I'm still confused. So let's say I bring my own cup, right? And they could give me incentive, but they don't have to, but they have to let me use my own cup, right?
Right, they do.
But otherwise, they have to charge a 25 to 50 cent fee for a cup.
So the way it should work is kind of as you described. So they would get to use their reusable cup for free or they would get charged 25 cents for the disposable.
But again, I'm still a little confused. Fees for nonreusable cups and containers shall exceed, so it's between, it has to be more than 25 cents. It has to be at least 26 cents, but not more than 50, correct?
Cinebros result.
And if I'm confused, I bet the restaurants will, so maybe we just don't language it.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little clearer.
Yeah, we can definitely make that clear. In particular, I wanted to find out maybe a little bit more about the council's feelings about this charge because I know that there's been a lot of discussion about it and questions about it. So this feedback is really good, and so if you've got any other questions or comments about it, I'd love to hear that, too.
Yeah, because the way I read this is it has to exceed, be more than 25 cents per cup or container, but not more than 50 cents per order. So if I'm ordering for 20 people, it's no more than 50 cents. And if it has to be more than 25, 26 cents, then it will never be more than 26 cents for each one, right? Because then you're at 52 cents. So I just think, one, we just need to clean that up a little, and I'm sort of a little concerned with starting with that higher charge right away, but I'm open to hearing more on that. But whatever we do, I just think if we want to charge 25 cents per cup or container, it should be 25 cents per cup or container, not no more than 50 cents if someone's ordering, you know, getting food for city council, right, for dinner and staff with 30 people. So these are just questions to go through it, so then we can have more discussions with other folks. I think the waiver, and maybe this is more of a question for the city manager, where you can waive things based on all kinds of hardship, is that clear enough direction? Or do we need to get more specific? Or I'm just, I was sort of curious sort of how the city manager felt about that and if you're going to get a ton of applications for hardship, if we need to do anything more specific here, in your view.
So I'm trying to think of the origin of this language because I think I took it from another city's requirements. I think, not compliant product. Right. I don't know. To me, this provides enough flexibility, but also gets at some of the particular conditions that would have to be met. So I don't know that I have any concerns.
I thought the concerns were good ones to raise. I just want to make sure it's clear enough to the city manager and to someone asking for a waiver as we do it. And then my two other comments were, I thought we talked about some exemption for existing businesses that didn't have, right, dishwashings or dishwashing availability, put space. Is that sort of what, those are the things you're envisioning a part of the waiver?
I would envision that as part of the hardship waiver, or I'm sorry, the feasibility-based hardship waiver. So if it's really infeasible to do this in a particular location, then that's where that would be addressed.
Okay, great. And the last thing I just want to ask is, I know we talked about, and I don't know if we ended on, but that all this was applicable for what can be used on any city facility, right? If the city's getting food, if we're doing things at the convention center. Now, I know the convention center has proactively done some of this, but making sure that if we're applying this to businesses, we're applying it to ourselves.
Yes, so the city facilities, to the extent that we serve food and we would qualify under these conditions, then yes, it would definitely apply. The convention center, I have been working with them and actually went out there back in when we first proposed this, and they do have a kind of a waste-free option that actually addresses, I think, all of the things on here. And so it would just be a matter of making that waste-free option the standard that they apply for onsite events. So, yeah, and I also had a conversation with the vendor, the new vendor for the airport, and I went through these major criteria, and they are pretty much doing all of these things as well.
So I'm open to the discussions on the other things. I think I'm, and I'm open, obviously, to discussion anything, but I would think if we're going to pass this for businesses, it should apply to all city facilities and programs equally. We should add that to the ordinance. Okay, that'll be my questions. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mayor Person Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Patrick, first, thank you. This is really an outstanding amount of work that has gone into what you're doing, and I'm really proud that our city's moving in this direction. But a couple of questions. The charge for disposables. What is it that convinces us that charging for the disposable cups is in fact going to reduce the number of cups that are used in restaurants? Particularly at 25 cents?
Right. So there has been research done on disincentive programs and fees associated with, for example, single-use items like plastic bags. And based on that research, it seems to indicate that most people respond to the disincentive approach. So the fees and other things that make it harder or more expensive to buy things that are disposable. So it's sort of based on that concept. We unfortunately are in the situation where the other cities that have decided to move forward with this particular item have not implemented it yet. And so we were really hoping that we were going to glean some lessons learned and some information from their implementation by now, and that has not come about. So, again, it's sort of based on the research and the psychology behind, you know, disincentives. And again, we try to add that incentive component in there as well as an option based on your feedback last time.
But does this apply to both a plastic cup and to a paper-based cup?
Yeah, so it would be any disposable item.
Did we consider making a distinction between paper-based products and plastic or polystyrene products?
So we did not look into that distinction, mostly because this was an incentive for reuse. So the charge is designed to prevent disposable use in all its forms.
And because we're proposing to make that charge, we also have something where we're proposing to make an exception for customers who are receiving state assistance. And I was trying to run through my mind how that would work. And what that would seem to mean is that the person taking the order would be asking an individual, do you receive state assistance? And I can imagine any number of individuals becoming very agitated by that and some feeling that they had been profiled based on demographic characteristics that could just create some really conflicting situations. And I'm also imagining other situations where someone drives their Bentley into the restaurant, is asked whether or not they're receiving state assistance, and says yes. And we have no system for how we would determine whether or not that yes was an honest or a dishonest answer. Help me with what I think is going to be a lot of really pragmatic potentials for disputes and arguments as somebody's trying to place an order.
So I share some of your concerns with regard to this particular element. I think it's, like you said, it could go either way. It could be a fairly easy exchange and things go smoothly, but it also could become very complicated very fast. So, again, I think that is one of the challenging situations with regard to the charge is when to waive it. And so I don't know that, again, I don't know that there is a better answer than what's written here, but I'm certainly happy to explore that particular element some more.
All right, thank you, Patrick. Last question I have for you. I'm a little confused when it comes to a takeout order as to whether or not the restaurant would be allowed to ask, do you want to go forks and knives and spoons? Or does the customer have to ask for it without it being offered?
So the intent is for it to work either way, so that the customer can affirmatively ask for it, or if they are asked, they would respond. So that's the way it's meant to be written. And again, I think that there needs to be some clarifying language in there about what on-demand means or on-request only, so.
I would really second that. We have an awful lot of people who are visiting Palm Springs and getting takeout orders. And since it's happened to me personally, I can tell you, one of the worst experiences is to walk three blocks back from the takeout restaurant to your hotel room and find that you forgot to ask for the fork and knife.
I agree, and I've been there as well and have done really creative things with chips and other sorts of food items. So, yeah, so we would want to make sure that it's very clear and try to prevent that if at all possible. And that's one of the comments that we did receive from one of the businesses that, you know, they put it in there automatically because they want to avoid that situation where somebody's walking back or gets angry, et cetera.
Right, thank you.
I just have a follow-up question. Patrick, my understanding, Berkeley has a similar ordinance where they have a similar model, and I was reading articles about compliance. So has Berkeley implemented their program, if you know, or did they stall it?
So we did, before this meeting, I did send out a request through our consultant to some of those cities that have been implementing this, and we only got one response back. And I think that was from San Anselmo that said that it's still on hold for them. And so I am unsure if Berkeley has moved forward with it. They started actually a little bit before the pandemic, so they may actually have a little bit of data before they may have shut down. So I do not know if Berkeley has moved forward post-pandemic or kind of at this point in the pandemic.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I did find an article, it looks like, because I was looking up how this might be implemented, and it said that Berkeley's disposable cup law is now in effect. That was January 2020, so they could have paused it. But it talks about enforcement and compliance with fast food and other restaurants. So I do think it would be helpful for us to connect with Berkeley in terms of implementation because hopefully they've been doing this now for over a year. We could learn some lessons if you can get a response from their city staff.
We'll definitely follow up with them, and I know that they did go on hold as of the pandemic. So it is likely that they did start, but then stopped.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your expertise on this. Other comments or questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Garner.
Thank you. It was good to see that there's been different types of outreach. I know that the subcommittee had talked about calling restaurants, and so it's good to know that that kind of proactive stuff took place. Yeah, I do think that there's definitely a lot of people, of restaurants, that still use styrofoam. I do think that it really is in our best interest to move away from that. But I see that this is going to be probably a challenge at first as we implement. But I, one of the most compelling things that I saw from this was just kind of the examples towards the end that we're talking about, the money saved on the behalf of the businesses once they switched over and had this be in effect. So I think that's really important to point out and just, I like the way that this is going and providing that useful information to our businesses. And then hopefully, it doesn't become, it doesn't need to become a burdensome cost on the consumer because it works and it's just easier all around for everyone. So I appreciate this and thank you for the additional outreach.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood.
I'm sorry, just a word about the polystyrene, too. I'm sorry. We did do a survey before COVID and found that actually polystyrene use was fairly low among restaurants. So it was like maybe 20%, 30% of restaurants. That number has skyrocketed over the pandemic. So what was kind of a fairly easy switchover is now going to be, I think, much more difficult as you noted. And so I think it's going to require a little more effort to make that conversion, so. Madam Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood, do you have questions or comments now? I can go as well if you don't.
No, I just want to really thank our Sustainability Commission and Patrick and city staff. I think anytime we can remove carcinogens from our food stream, I think it's great. Anytime that we can recycle, I think it's great. Anytime we can reuse our landfill, I think it's great. So thank you very much for reaching out to the businesses, and that's all my comments are, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And if I could just add, so what you didn't include in your presentation, but one thing that we did, I just want to show, this actually started with the fourth-grade students of Desert Learning Academy. You can see them right here. They actually came to the city council meeting in 2018 and asked, and they wrote us a letter asking us to protect the environment and take a stand against single-use plastics and styrofoam. They actually did experiments in their classroom to show how plastic and styrofoam don't degrade like paper products. They did cost analysis of how sustainable options that can be more cost-effective for businesses and the consumer. And they came and presented at city council and asked us to take action on this. And they came and presented at city council and asked us to take action on this in 2018. So I'm proud of them for spearheading this, really. And then at that request, went to the Sustainability Commission, and city council has discussed this now. So I'm very amped to take this action. And, you know, I know that we had to delay because of the pandemic and the unknowns for restaurants and, you know, the concern that they wouldn't survive. However, I know that I personally have thrown away hundreds of pieces of single-use plastic over the pandemic from takeout food, and I've eaten a ton of food in styrofoam in Palm Springs while I was pregnant. So I regret not taking this action sooner. And I'm just really hopeful that this can be a first step in leading the way on cleaning up our environment and protecting our health from these toxins. So I have a few questions as well for Patrick, if I can. So one, is this the ordinance that we saw before, or was there no ordinance attached the last time we discussed this?
So the last time we discussed this, there was no ordinance attached. It was a discussion of the various elements that would go into it, but basically all of those elements are here.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then, I'm not a scientist, so can you explain? So this requires compostable materials be free of the permanent fluorinated chemicals. Does that apply to everything or only things that are compostable?
So that's a really great question. And what I would like to do is do a little bit more research because other cities have started to include this language as well. We included it in there for compostables in particular because this is a chemical additive that is added to compostable materials to make them more resistant, actually, to, I think, decomposing when you have liquids in it. So I want to make sure that it is not more pervasive than that, but I know that that was how this originated. So I can take a look at that, and if that needs to, the statement needs to be broader, we can do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I would support that if it's needed. And I'm trying to wrap my head around this. So this clearly bans styrofoam materials, and then it allows for a reusable process and then also a fee, you know, for using takeout, but it doesn't ban plastics from being used in takeout. Is that right?
So that is right. And a couple of things about that. So one is, some of the other cities who are passing these sorts of ordinances are moving everybody to compostable footwear and/or fiber-based footwear. The only challenge with that is while it does provide you an incremental step beyond plastic, so it gets you out of maybe the plastic arena, it doesn't necessarily solve your disposal issue. So all of that material is most likely going to a landfill because our composting processes here locally don't take that stuff. There are places that do. So for example, Alameda is one of the places that first started with this and switched everybody over to fiber-based products, but their system accommodates that. So they were able to put that stuff in their compost, and it goes to a composting facility, and it gets managed that way. So we don't necessarily have that luxury. So we didn't necessarily switch everybody to that. The other thing, too, is that, and we would like to make this clear in our communication about this, is that there are certain plastics that are recyclable that if they are used, and actually, they can be reused, too, but they are recyclable in our system. And so what we would do is probably encourage people in that direction to try to use those materials. And actually, if we eliminated polystyrene, the number six item, we're probably left with ones, twos, and fives, which are mostly recyclable in our system. So it does still allow for some plastic material to be used as disposables, but again, it tries to steer people away from that through the use of reuse and through, hopefully, the introduction of more paper-based products.
Thank you. So I know that the goal is to just avoid single-use products and to encourage reuse. And that's how we're going to solve this problem because even, you know, it's a waste to use paper products that are single-use. But could we require the use of recyclable or compostable materials for a takeout product?
So, I mean, yeah.
And my thinking there is that maybe our system doesn't take it now, but I know you're exploring the state's requirements and that we might take it in the future. And so how do we build an ordinance that is going to be effective for, you know, when we do have compostable materials, you know, in two years from now?
Right. Right. That's a great question. And actually, a lot of the other ordinances are written in that fashion to require recyclable or compostable material. And I am happy to make that change. The reason that we shied away from that initially was because we were less confident about what kinds of things can be recycled and composted. And so we didn't necessarily want to push people in a direction that didn't necessarily matter that much. So I have been doing a little bit more digging along with Palm Springs Disposal Services about the types of material that are acceptable in our recycling system. And so we can definitely have, I think, I feel more confident that we could have that language in there with one exception, I would say. So in terms of, this is really weird and in the weeds, but in terms of cups, disposable cups, clear cups, so you typically have, if you look at the bottom of most of those, they're number one, so they're polyethylene. And those polyethylene cups are actually not recyclable in our system because of the way that they are separated in the system. So the optic sorter can't sort them out. They can sort out number-two clear plastic cups. So for example, if we were to say only things that are recyclable in our system, then we would be eliminating all of number-one cups and moving everybody to number-two cups, which I don't know is feasible. So I think we would need to, I'd need to take a little bit of a look at that to make sure that we can legitimately say that and people would have options for those types of containers. So these are some of the crazy nuances that get involved when we talk about recyclable versus compostable, et cetera.
Thank you so much for doing all that work, researching what actually is recyclable and compostable in our system because it's easy for us to pass policy and just say, what I would want to say is, no plastics. But to do that work is really helpful. So I personally would like to see us require the use of recyclable or compostable materials in a way that creates an ordinance for the future and also could be effective now, based on your research, if you think that's feasible. Let me see if I have any other questions for you. You said that there, in the staff report, it talks about a sustainability scholarship for businesses, and then you talked about a pilot program for reusable cups and takeout containers that could be done through the city, which I think is really interesting. So that would be for residents or for businesses? And should we fund that activity as well in addition to the scholarships for businesses?
So I definitely think it's worth funding that pilot. So we got into a fairly lengthy discussion with a company called Vessel that has a reusable cup and container program in other cities. And they were going full steam ahead prior to the pandemic. And so the idea there is that, and this is actually where some of the fee language comes from. So for example, what they do is they subscribe to a service where they get reusable cups delivered to them that are sanitized and cleaned. And they use those cups and give those out to customers, and customers return them to a certain location. So it would be another restaurant or another kiosk that's located throughout the city. And so that's how they return the cups, so they don't have to go back necessarily to the same place. And usually, the fee for that service is split sort of between the customer and between the business. So for example, it might cost you 25 cents for that cup through Vessel, but you would only charge the customer about 10 cents because you're getting an advantage that you don't have to clean that cup, you don't have to own that cup, you don't have to really do anything else with it except for give it out to your customer and then, you know, hope that they take it back somewhere else. So anyway, so that's how that program works. So it's a business program, but it's really designed for customers and to give them the convenience of using reusable, but also giving them the flexibility to basically return it anywhere as you might a more disposable cup. In terms of the sustainability scholarship, I absolutely think that that should continue and that should be focused on restaurants. And we did have one business at least that approached us and went from disposable footwear to reusable footwear for onsite use. And we talked to them, and they're going to give us a little feedback on how that's going and what their cost savings is. So we did have a couple of businesses that took advantage of that already. And so it's a matter of just rolling that out and promoting it. And again, if there's an ordinance coming, then people would likely be more inclined to do that.
Thank you, Patrick. So your budget in the fiscal analysis includes money for outreach and education, for consulting services, and for sustainability scholarships. So would we want to add funding then for reusable pilots?
Yes, we would.
Is there funding in the sustainability fund to do that, or that would come back at second reading when we take final action?
Let's bring that back at second reading. I think there is some money in the sustainability budget, but it also, I've been promising a lot, so we'll take a look at that.
Thank you. I really would like us to lead the way on that because I think that's the solution here because it sounds like even some paper products might, like paper cups, have plastic on them in a way that they're not fully paper. So, right, we just need to get to reusable. So, sorry, council, I've been working on this with Councilmember Corr for now years and years. And so I have all of these questions and comments. I think my last question is just about the fee that would be for takeout food containers. And I'm wondering if there's any regulated use of those funds because essentially, people could profit, you know, it's not a lot, that could profit on using plastics because they get a fee for it, right? So I don't think we're seeing that in cities like Berkeley and other places that have used this model, but is there anything to say, you know, oh, these funds should be used to purchase reusable products or something like that to direct their use?
I would have to consult with the city attorney on the direction of the use of those funds. I know that when we directed the bag, the disposable bag fee, that we really didn't have, couldn't dictate any of how that money was used. So I think for this, we would recommend that they use it to offset potential costs for improving their disposable containers or going for reusable containers, but I don't know that we could dictate that, so I could ask.
Thank you. At a minimum, could we add that language that we recommend they use for reusable products to the ordinance?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Those are all my questions and comments. Are there any more discussion by council? Everyone got tired by all my questions. I'm very excited about this. I'm glad that we're doing it. It's been a lot of work by the Sustainability Commission and by city staff and Patrick and the businesses who participated and residents in all this work with us. So thank you for everyone for your work. So Patrick, what, I'm sure you'll get, it sounds like a motion to approve this ordinance. We've given you direction on some changes. What, to you or the city manager, what specificity do you need from us to bring this back for a second reading?
So I think a few of your things were more clarification, so I'm certainly happy to do that. I think I still struggle a little bit with the fee for the cups and containers. So what I'd like to do is maybe do a little bit more research on that and perhaps bring a proposal back to you based on some of the feedback that I've heard so far. And perhaps, as Mayor Protam mentioned, see if I can do a little investigating on that waiver piece to see how that is handled or not handled elsewhere. So I think if we can do a little more research on that front, I think that's really the key element in addition to those other clarifications that I mentioned or that you guys mentioned through the discussion. So would it, could I, I guess, request perhaps that I meet with Mayor Holstich and Councilmember Corr to maybe bounce the revised draft off of you before I bring it back to council?
That works for me. Does that work for council? Seeing all heads nod, yes. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance with the changes provided and the direction given in Councilmember Corr's. And then we will appoint me and Councilmember Corr to work on our revised draft to bring back to city council. Would that have to be an additional first reading or could it be a second reading? I don't think we made any significant changes.
Mayor, if we're going to be changing the substance of the fee language, then that would require another first reading. If we're just talking about adjusting the amount, then that could be, the language could be revised tonight with discretion to change the amount by resolution of the city council. But if it's more than typographical or grammatical changes, that would require another first reading.
Thank you. So we'll work with Patrick on that as liaison. Patrick, do you need any other direction?
I don't believe so. I think that covers it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your work. I made a motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Corr. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Corr.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Middleton.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, and I'll read the ordinance title, which is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, adding chapter 5.87 to title five of the Palm Springs Municipal Code regarding reusable food service ware and plastic waste reduction. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's do the next item, and then we'll do public comment because that will probably be around nine. So the next item is 3B, consideration of an ordinance regarding security doors at adult use cannabis businesses and allowing visible cannabis goods and graphics in cannabis dispensaries. If we can have a staff report, please.
What we are introducing is an amendment to the current cannabis chapter of the municipal code. It was caught by our fire department that there was an inconsistency between the state fire code and our ordinance with regard to having doors that automatically remain locked even in the case of a power outage. As can be seen, this could be detrimental in the case of a fire because law enforcement and fire would not be able to enter the premises. So what we are requesting is that the revisions be made to the current code to have it aligned with the fire code, and that would mean that the doors would be unlocked during a power outage. But we also want to point out that we would still have other provisions in our code that would secure the facility, such as cameras and security guards. And we also require in our code that there is a 24/7 liaison with the city from each business for the sole purpose of security concerns. The other item that we are requesting is amended is the visibility of cannabis at retailers. When the introduction of the initial legislation from the state was introduced, it did require that there be no visible cannabis from retailers. However, when the final adoption was made, that provision was dropped for various reasons. They did not want it to impact the safety of the businesses because it could easily be robbed due to no one being able to look in. Additionally, they did not think it was aesthetically pleasing for businesses to have their windows completely blacked out. So that is what is before you tonight.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for city staff? Councilmember Woods?
So Veronica, thank you very much. I'm a little, I don't know if it's state law or if it's local law, not to allow a dispensary that has a lounge. or if it's local law, not to allow a dispensary that has a lounge to look at the dispensary itself, not the lounge, because the way that it's worded is confusing to me.
In regards to lounges. So anytime you have any consumption, there's to be no visibility from the public view.
Is that a state law or is that a local law?
No, that's state. That's actually outlined in the state codes.
So if you had a dispensary with a lounge, if the lounge wasn't visible from the public right of way, but the dispensary could be visible from the public right of way?
Correct.
Okay, so I think we need to change wording then on page seven of the ordinance, section three, number 17. Because I, I think what we want to do is really have as much visibility into these businesses as possible and as few blacked out windows as possible. And if, if, you know, I was talking to Lighthouse as an example, which is very open, it looks like a, it looks like an Apple store, it's quite beautiful. I'd like for that openness to still remain, but maybe the lounge not visible from the public right of way. But the way that it's worded, it seems like if you have a lounge, you can have nothing visible. And so I think we need some rewording on that page seven, section three, 17.
Yes, we can work with the city attorney to revise that.
Right. And, you know, the same thing goes with another example is the 420 Bank. You know, they have the doors open, you can see the dispensary, but you can't necessarily see the lounge, which I think is a good thing for us.
Yes, we can do that. We can request that, that they work with us to make it more aesthetically pleasing.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Other questions for Veronica? Other comments from council or a motion?
I can make a motion to pass to take staff representation with a change to section three, 17, A17, to allow a facility to not display the lounge, but able to display the dispensary and to encourage it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Garner, second. Is there any further?
I'm sorry, Mayor and council and Aaron, I'm not getting audio.
We are.
Thank you. Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Corr?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. And I'll read the ordinance title, which is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, amending chapter 5.55 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code regarding security doors at adult-use cannabis businesses and allowing some visible cannabis goods and graphics in cannabis dispensaries. Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. So as promised, the next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. City clerk, if you could begin contacting speakers by telephone.
Mark Davis, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Good evening, city council. I just wanted to make a couple of points about the placement of Forever Marilyn. There would be zero controversy about Marilyn if the council had not suddenly sided with PS Resorts to place Marilyn in Museum Way. Marilyn would have gone to her planned place in the park and no issues would have come up because for seven years it was discussed by the public and already decided on. Now from that poorly thought out decision, we have a committee that has raised almost $70,000 to continue the lawsuit against closing the road. And subsequently with the publicity, the Me Too Marilyn movement came on board and they already have 40,000 signatures on their petition to keep Marilyn out of Palm Springs completely. Since January 2015, Marilyn has always been in the park plans, even as the park plans morphed over the years. The council, without due diligence or the courtesy of working whether even asking to resume their opinion, without any of the city's commission's input and approvals or any other information that would have informed a decision, made a bad decision to place on Museum Way. By doing so, you stirred up a huge hornet's nest for no good reason. Then apparently from just one letter sent by PS Resorts to the council dated October 29, 2020, suddenly stated that they wanted Marilyn to sit in the middle of Museum Way. And it came to the November city council meeting. Seems unusually quick. Without considering the consequences, a decision was made which closes a road that the downtown plan stated for over seven years was essential to the success of the downtown project. An article in the Desert Sun, November 6, 2020, about PS Resorts wanting to take it on the Museum Way was the first the public learned of this new plan, and it caused a tsunami of letters and emails directed to the city council, to the Desert Sun. A valid voice even to Desert Sun editorial prior to the date of the November council meeting were printed stating that closing Museum Way was wrong. Recently, it was stated in news program that the mayor said it was sad that the dissent only came after the agreement was signed in early December. Well, that's not true. There was plenty of dissent recorded on public record prior to even the November meeting. At the same news program, the council also, mayor stated that no city money was going to the Marilyn project, which is not true. Transient occupancy tax is totally city money. In this case, the funds are just basically laundered through PS Resorts to make it look like the funds were not from the city. A million dollars is a lot of city tax to spend plus another 200,000 needed to transport and assemble Marilyn. The community has told Museum Way is a temporary location, but the cost to take her apart and move it to another location will mean another $100,000 plus of city TOT tax funds to do so. Highly unlikely once placed, you would be moved a second time. This isn't a worldwide phenomenon. No other city other than Palm Springs was as true as buying it. And it's certainly not worth a million dollars to have this on Museum Way. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Weisman, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. My name is Julie Wyman, and I am an artist and entrepreneur who's owned a home in Palm Springs for the last eight years. I am saddened that the city has chosen to put up a sculpture of Marilyn in a location that was supposed to be an unobstructed view corridor from Palm Canyon Drive to the museum main entrance thereby, hang on, let me just turn this down, blocking the view of a Class I historic site, disrupting a prior agreement to locate the statue in the original plan, the park next door, stifling community feedback, and broadcasting a most public locate, in a most public location, an archaic, hyper-sexualized sculpture of an iconic actress. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Schonenberg, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi, this is Owen. I am the coordinator of the Women's Issues Committee of the Courageous Resistance of the Desert and Palm Springs Indivisible California's 36th Congressional District. I'm speaking to you regarding the return and placement of Marilyn Monroe statue in downtown Palm Springs. From our point of view, it is imperative that a more measured and thoughtful assessment is needed before finalizing these plans for locating Forever Marilyn in Palm Springs. This statue will send a message to both residents and visitors of Palm Springs and to the world. It is well documented that Marilyn Monroe suffered mightily at the will of men in Hollywood and in her personal life. In light of the current climate, both in Hollywood and on Broadway, the statue's return to Palm Springs flies in the face of the hashtag Me Too movement. We are concerned that our beautiful city will be viewed as sanctioning misogyny, abuse, and the denigration of women. Data tells us that one in six adult women have been sexually assaulted in childhood by a family member, and the longstanding, long-lasting effects, for instance, hypersexuality and feel no one has value except a sexual one is shared by abused victims of assault and abuse, as was Marilyn. And most, yes, and most were made to feel guilty and alone, and in many ways were just as believed to be grownups around them as Marilyn has been. There are rallies in opposition of the placement of the hashtag Me Too Marilyn statue, and there are almost 40,000 plus signatures from those of us opposing the decision made by the city council and Mayor Holstich. The committee believes that more public input is needed. All of Palm Springs is aware that Palm Springs Art Museum has extremely vocal about their opposition to its placement. As many citizens of Palm Springs were not aware of the hearing that took place in November to discuss this matter, we feel that it warrants a public hearing with comment before a final decision is made. This matter now has international attention, which could mar the reputation of Palm Springs for decades to come. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. As the Courageous Resistance Women's Issues Committee, we believe it is our responsibility to speak out and address important issues that affect us in all of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. James Spindler, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is James Spindler, and I've been a Palm Springs taxpayer and homeowner for over 20 years. Hotel operators should not be curating the city and dictating how public space is used. Despite endless scandals and corruption, citizens voted for the Measure J sales tax increase to help fund downtown development. A major part of the downtown specific plan was the designation of a clear and open street that would connect Palm Canyon Drive to the museum. It was named Museum Way, not Marilyn Way, for a reason. Why was the will of voters overridden with a backroom deal to move the sculpture and block the street by a special interest group, PS Resorts? While there are so many questions about why a group of 19 hotels can determine what and where public art goes, I would like to focus on the lack of transparency and abdication of responsibility to abide by the wishes of taxpayers and voters who put city council members in office to begin with. Much has changed since 2012, when the Marilyn sculpture first arrived. We have had a public reckoning about equality that makes the statue tone deaf to current times. That aside, why is a special interest group that is opaquely funded by the city spending a million dollars under the demonstrably false premise that it will be an economic driver for the city? Coachella, Stagecoach, Desert X, Modernism Week, the BNB Parabat Tournament, the Film Festival, among other now world famous events are the real economic drivers. If the city and city-funded PS Resorts wants to grow tourism, it should invest millions to fight the homeless issue versus invest in a short-sighted Instagram moment that violates taxpayer wishes. One thing sadly has not changed, the lack of transparency by city hall. I hope that you will reconsider the decision and move the statue 100 feet to its original location. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Dorit Sifies, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. So I'm listening to the voices of your community members. I know it's your role as public service workers, and I know that you all wish to abide by this democratic tradition. So thank you for listening to me. I'm an artist, I'm an educator, and I'm a conflict mediator living and working in Southern California. My work is dedicated to deeply understanding, recognizing, and building bridges across human differences to expand what it means to be fully interconnected in life. Several times a year, I visit Palm Springs to participate in and enjoy all that Palm Springs and the desert offers, the climate, the ecology, art, design, and most importantly, spaciousness. The conflict that you have sparked recently in commissioning the sculptural object representing Marilyn Monroe brings me great pause, sadness, and anger. I'm not inspired to visit Palm Springs under these circumstances, and I know that many of my colleagues feel the same way. In short, your choice is deeply disappointing, reflecting a lack of understanding how images work in our culture. It can cause hurt and pain to many. Have we not been awakened in the last several years to better recognize how images, words, and monuments carry cultural meaning that represent shared cultural histories and often histories of oppression by some against others? No one is outside of history, and no one is free from the forces of oppression, whether as perpetrator or as victim. The sculptural object called Marilyn perpetuates a stereotype cliche that is offensive to the woman Marilyn Monroe and to all women, depicting us as sexualized objects to be demeaned, abused, and ridiculed. How is this possibly helpful to our community, to young girls, to mothers, to sisters who live and work alongside the men, the brothers, and the fathers? How does this add to human recognition of equity and reciprocity? Who does this serve? Who does this oppress and continue to abuse? How are you listening to the many voices of your community in embracing this representation? I challenge you to do better. Be better as human beings currently in the special role of leading the Palm Springs community and echoing to all other communities across the United States. We each must build back better.
Ma'am, your time has elapsed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trina Turk, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Mayor and city council, my name is Trina Turk. I'm a founder of the Committee to Relocate Marilyn, started when the city and PS Resorts co-opted a publicly-funded street, Museum Way, with no rationale for why the Marilyn statue must go there of all places. The 2016 downtown plan was ignored. The museum was not consulted. The whole scheme reeks of a backdoor deal concocted with the Old Boys Club, who really don't represent the future of Palm Springs anyhow. This is a city hall giveaway of Museum Way. The council is acting as stooges for the whims of a few people. Lisa Middleton told the Desert Sun the council is, quote, "willing to give the preferred location of the business community a try." I'm a member of the business community, as are my neighbors in the Uptown Design District. It's not our preferred location. The statue did not contribute positively to our business before. No data has been presented showing how it will be beneficial in the future. PS Resorts is a dictatorship. Members are afraid to express their actual opinions of the statue due to fear of retribution. The city is pretending they are not involved financially in the purchase of the statue, but the money came from city coffers funneled through PS Resorts. Is this transparent and open government? It is not. When the city council, PS Resorts, and Buzz Factory met regarding the statue unveiling, the growing opposition was discussed. The conclusion they came to was to, quote, drown out the negative, which is us. The conclusion they came to was to, quote, 'drown out the negative,' which is us, members of the community. There was no mention of open discussion or inclusion. Is this responsive government? It is not. KREMA will pursue every legal avenue available to block the placement of the statue in Museum Way. You will come to realize that it's an overpriced boondoggle that has tarnished the city's brand even prior to its arrival. If the statue is placed in Museum Way, we will continue to fight and agitate for its removal to another location. We are organized, well-funded, and mad as hell. We also vote. Thank you."
Thank you. Deborah Hovell, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
All right. My name is Deborah Hovell. I am a homeowner here in Palm Springs, an active member of the museum and many other preservation groups, and a big supporter of the City Council. However, I am very concerned about this placement proposed and approved by the City Council of this Marilyn statuette. I actually care less about the last-century depiction of women demonstrated by this statue. Misogyny is so baked into our culture, women are used to it. My concern is that no statue or sculpture of any sort should be allowed to be placed in the middle of a public street that was hard-run, straight through to the museum from our commercial street. There's no way we should allow a special-interest lobby to strong-arm our council and our community into placing this object where it obstructs the public throughway. That thing could be placed many other spots around town and have the desired interest. While I respect our merchants' desire for foot-traffic and Instagrammable moments, I think it should be put someplace else where it can accomplish that purpose and not obstruct the view to the museum. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Julie Rogers, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hello, my name is Julie Rogers and I'm a 50-year resident of Palm Springs. During my longtime career in local media, I have stayed close to our valley's tourism industry. The Forever Marilyn statue will not deliver tourists to Palm Springs specifically to view the statue. Rather, it will be seen by people who are already here visiting. There was never a mechanism to accurately measure return on investment during the statue's first rotation, and there is not one to measure it now. Instagram impressions are not transactional. I ask you to consider what the return on investment would be for $1 million in digital media directed at the drive markets. With today's capabilities, the results could easily be measured by bookings at link hotels, attractions, retail stores, and restaurants. Where was the oversight of PS Resorts and their decision-making on the purchase of the statue? Mr. Datta was quoted in a Desert Sun article as saying, "The street was meant for other public exhibitions, and there will be more to come." Who will oversee the curation of these future exhibitions? A hotel manager? Why not appoint a person who is knowledgeable in the area of public art? Perhaps consult the good neighbors at the museum? Museum Way was supposed to be a direct corridor to the museum. Why block it off with such a long-term installation? Its proximity to the museum implies that it's affiliated with museum, one of our prized attractions and the cultural heartbeat of our community. Forever Marilyn is at the centerpiece of Museum Way, reflects poorly on one of our most respected attractions. Doesn't adding an attraction like this to the detriment of another defeat the purpose? And on a separate note, if Marilyn Monroe's true legacy in Palm Springs is not that she lived here, not that she was discovered at the racket club, but that she had an ex-remerital affair with the President of the United States, what kind of legacy is this to celebrate? As a concession, and I do mean a concession, I respectfully ask that you move the statue to the park as originally planned. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Armstrong, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Wait, I'm sorry, I can't get the, um... Hello, are you there?
Yes.
Shall I begin?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, okay. Hi, I'm Liz Armstrong. I am a resident of Palm Springs and I thank you for taking my call. My concerns about the Marilyn statue have to do with its blatant sexism, and that's been expressed tonight and in many letters sent to the city since the fall, and also in hundreds of comments from the over 39,000 signers of the Change Org Me Too Marilyn petition. You may have seen the quote that "it is a monument to misogyny in the guise of nostalgia." It's been quoted a lot, but a friend of mine suggested to stop using the word misogyny because it's so bloodless, and his suggestion was to call it for what it is: "An oversized blow-up doll for men who dream of Palm Springs as a hunky-tonk hooker town, an object for members of the Lettres Club, and for men who still like to look up lady skirts." Instead of all that, I really just want to read an email from a lovely neighbor who sent me this note today. "My husband and I have been coming to Palm Springs for the past 15 years. We've seen the downtown area transformed from an old shopping mall with a kitschy 26-foot statue of Marilyn into a vibrant commercial zone. The Palm Springs Art Museum is the architectural centerpiece, and Museum Way gives a clear view of the museum from the Main Street Palm Canyon." They go on to say that "the plans for the downtown park have shown support and emphasis of Palm Springs as a mid-century modernist art and architecture mecca. Now, the threat of the return of the 26-foot-tall Marilyn statue to the downtown area, blocking the clear view of the museum, is undoing the progress of the last 15 years. The location could not be more awkward or incongruous, excuse me. We know about its issues, we know that it represents a time in Hollywood when women were portrayed as sexual objects or worse, but by putting Marilyn statue in such an important place and closing a new street, you are supporting a very negative message." Thank you. I think all the other points that I've made in the past have made it into the letters sent to you earlier today and, as I said, over the last few months.
Ms. Armstrong, your time has elapsed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Helene Vernin, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi, thank you very much. This is about Stop the Misogyny, about the Marilyn Monroe sculpture in front of the museum, which is, imagine if you had any of the gay men, or men like Clark Gable in their underpants in front of this important Stuart Williams museum, you know, like it would be... Hello?
Yes.
It would be like very shocking, and I can't believe for an LGBT community that you would be for this ridiculous placement of this misogynistic sculpture of the woman who was abused since the time she was 11. And I recently moved here because of the beautiful architecture and the culture, and to do this for tourists with little girls looking up her underpants is just completely ridiculous and very embarrassing for such a wonderful city like Palm Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Janice Lyle, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. My name's Janice Lyle. I live in Palm Springs, and I worked at the Palm Springs Art Museum for 23 years, and I was its director from 1994 to 2007. During that period, I met countless times with John Westman, with many mayors, and with City Council members to discuss the need to remedy the downtown situation in which the museum was hidden behind the old desert-fashion plaza. The need for a street that opened the vista from Palm Canyon to the museum was stated over and over. By 2020, following decades of discussion, the street had been completed and the museum was seen from Palm Canyon. Then, in one City Council meeting at the end of last year, the closure of Museum Drive and the visual blocking of the museum by the Forever Marilyn statue was proposed by Palm Springs Resorts and approved without any formal public review. Ignoring decades of community input is incredibly unwise and dooming a serious arts institution to the negative association with a tone-deaf image that the museum does not endorse shows a complete disregard for the museum's cultural value. This city should be enormously proud of the Palm Springs Art Museum and its location in the downtown area, in its celebration of mid-century modern architecture, which is significant for the city's brand, and the artistic excellence that the museum brings to the community. Placing Forever Marilyn directly blocking the museum shows a complete disregard for the cultural sector. You can still stop this by reconsidering this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Sidney Williams, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As you are well aware, there is a large segment of our community that has opposed your decision to place the Marilyn statue in Museum Way. This street was planned as a visual and vehicular link from Palm Canyon to the museum. After years of being behind a failed shopping center and invisible from Palm Canyon Drive, the downtown plan opened up this view corridor. Much has changed in Palm Springs since Marilyn was here the last time. Architectural tourism has brought millions of dollars to local hotels, restaurants, and businesses. Tourists come to Palm Springs to view our stunning architecture and stay several days or weeks, spending freely. They are not day trippers who come to see Marilyn and then go home. The downtown park is nearing completion, and Marilyn should be installed there where she belongs and where she was originally planned to be. Thank you for your attention, and please reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Menrad, you are live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm Chris Menrad. I'm a resident of Palm Springs. I actually came here 22 years ago, and I kind of had an elaborate thing to talk about, you know, the cost of the statue and the total taxes and all that stuff, and I think other people have handled it quite well. And I'm really going to speak to you from my heart. I came to this town because I just, I love the mid-century architecture and the community that it has created. When I first came here, the City Council wanted to bulldoze all of it and turn it into Palm Desert. And it took us many years to convince them that's not the direction to go, and, you know, we need to preserve it, and we did things like Modernism Week, and it's all great. So I really care about this town. And to me, that statue at that location, blocking that museum, is such a travesty that I just can't even believe it got decided. So I'm really begging you to pick up the phone, and I know all of you, I've met and talked to all of you. Pick up the phone, call Mr. Datta and say, "We got a problem, we got to move it back to the park where you originally wanted it." And basically, the problem will go away, and you can do it because the contract you have with them is, it's a contract with an organization that you fund. So it's not like he's going to sue you. That contract is changeable, and you can do it. And you can make a lot of people happy, and the problems will go away. And as Mr. Datta says, it'll be a win-win. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment for tonight.
Thank you, City Clerk. The next item is Item 4A, Preliminary Overview of the Fiscal Year 2021-2022 General Fund Budget. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. This is a second review of the draft general fund budget for the next fiscal year 21-22 period. Based on consensus direction given at your last council meeting, we adjusted revenues by about $1.2 million based on our discussion of increasing permit fees for vacation rental and cannabis operations. So that increased our estimated revenue to $128.2 million for next year, which is still about 1% below our estimated revenue for this current fiscal year. As far as on the expenditures, we've adjusted those expenditures based on your prior direction, increasing expenditures by about $1.5 million for an expenditure of $128 million. So we're presenting to you a balanced budget with a surplus of just approximately $150,000. So we'll go into some of these discretionary expenditure items that we discussed at the last council meeting. And the first item was providing some additional support to you, the council, in the form of legislative analysts and other support. So included in the budget is funding for all of these options. They need not all be exercised by the council, but we've included those options for your consideration during the next fiscal year. Included is $100,000 for internships or other assistance for all council members, $50,000 for a contract with a state and federal lobbyist, as well as, as I mentioned, the executive administrative assistant position is a funded but vacant position with a fully burdened cost of $129,000. So unless you wanted to discuss this here, we don't need a decision other than the wherewithal for you to exercise your options during the fiscal year is built into the budget. So I'll pause in case you wanted to make any comments at this point.
Thank you. Are there any comments on that issue?
Okay, thank you. On the next discretionary item, it was community and economic development. We've maintained this funding in the budget again. We need not make a decision tonight. If you ultimately do not exercise and direct us to spend the funds, they'll be available for appropriation for other purposes. But $435,500 is available should the City Council elect to extend the Business Assistance Grant Program or create a rent adjustment program or other similar purposes. And similarly, we've maintained $100,000 in consulting services, as Mr. Verada explained at the last meeting. It's important to have some funding available to do some of the appraisals and financial analysis and perhaps actually start initiating some tax increment financing tools to help with our economic development programs. And we've retained the funding in the budget to be able to fully fund and continue the IHUB and C-VET programs for the next fiscal year. And I didn't know if I should pause here and entertain some council direction on these items, Mayor.
Councilmember Garner. Thank you. Marcus, I do know that we talked at the last meeting about C-VET and that funding. Wanting to know a little bit more information, and I'm realizing right now that I actually don't know who was supposed to be finding that out, if it was me as the person on the C-VET at that time of the C-VET meeting, or if it was city staff. I just wanted some clarification on that.
Mayor and Councilmember Garner, I can speak to that a little bit. My understanding from the last meeting is that council did request an analysis of programs. I think what might be most beneficial but would take a little longer than the current budget process is to really analyze the entire economic development landscape and how these activities fit within it. activities fit within it. That's really, I think if I were to try to characterize things from an outside perspective, just recently joining this team but with some economic development experience, these programs aren't exactly the first foundational kinds of things that you might build an economic development program on, but I do think they're generally important programs and tools. So that analysis might really be a discussion of what we're not doing as much or more than what this program is doing. So I think for the short term, we can certainly evaluate the very, the key indicators, the number of businesses served, and just a couple measurables for the program itself. But otherwise, I think to really do a deep dive and better understand how our resources are coming to bear on economic development and diversification, whether or not they need to be shifted and reprioritized, or simply other things added would simply take a little longer than this kind of condensed period of time between now and budget adoption. Does that help? And I know Jay is here. If you have some specific questions about the program, we might be able to get into that. But we haven't been able to perform much analysis just since the last meeting.
No, and that's fine for me. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't dropping the ball because I didn't know who exactly was supposed to be in charge of that. So that's fine.
Councilmember Corr.
Great. Thank you, and thank you for explaining that to the city manager. So is the recommendation, just to make sure we all understand it, the public understands is we're leaving the funding that was in, including CVEP IHUB funding, until such time as you do on the analysis, but that doesn't mean it's necessarily going to be for the entire year if after the analysis we decide not to continue it. Is that understood correct?
Yes, although I think it's worth pointing out that my understanding, and again, Jay might be able to help us clarify, is that there are certain lease expenses and things that CVEP and IHUB would incur. So I do think it's possible to shift program focus and perhaps analyze the various components of their leases, which are staggered while there's really use of city facility and lease of another facility. So it's not to say that the program has to exist exactly as it does now throughout the entire year. But I would recommend making the investment in the program, moving forward with the status quo as we perform the analysis, and that may encumber some of those resources longer term. I believe, for instance, their headquarters office is a lease that renews in August. So if we didn't make any determination to change the agreement in such a way that they would no longer use those headquarters, I think those funds would be encumbered for the year at that time. Jay, is that your understanding?
Evening again. We have structured the leases in the past to be forgiven to a certain extent based on the level of capital improvements they've done on the buildings, but those have come due. And so the payments have resumed except for COVID. So they've been hit pretty hard by their tenants not paying rents, and so we've had to work with them in that sense. So there's still some details to work out. And I believe as the city manager has explained, you know, sort of a top-down review of how all the pieces fit together would be appropriate and what role CVEP, CVEP would play in this, in the whole picture.
Okay, and I think it'd be helpful to know, and I don't know if this is as part of the analysis or before we pass a budget or the lease, sort of what all the other cities are doing and how much they're giving. The idea was this was Coachella Valley wide, and then I've heard us in Palm Desert are sort of most of the money they're getting, and I don't know if that's accurate, but it would be good to know, because I've been hearing other cities are not as invested. So would be good to have that information as we're looking at this and the lease and everything else.
A little more unique to Palm Springs and increasingly Palm Desert is the IHUB facility. So there is CVEP, which advocates for the Coachella Valley on economic development issues. And then there's the arm that promotes business growth and tries to get businesses started in the Coachella Valley that would have, and help them to be successful. So there's, that's the second part of the effort, which really doesn't have much funding other than the rents that come in or don't come in. So that's really one of the bigger pieces of the pie for the city to consider. But we will look at other city contributions in a similar vein.
Thank you. Thanks, Jay.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. I do like the city manager's idea that we need to look at this more holistically. $330,000 is a lot of money and it could fund somebody within our own department to help bolster our industrial areas as well as our retail areas. So I just want to make sure that we're spending this money in a most efficient manner. It's a lot of money to be spending. It could support a staff person if the IHUB and CVEP is not producing. So I'm wondering if we should have, if we should give the process six months instead of a full year for the analysis to come back. We've asked for it a year ago and we didn't get it. Now we're asking for another year. I think we should give it six months.
Thanks for that suggestion, Councilmember Woods. I think what we would want to do is reach back out to CVEP and look at that possibility. I think, again, if we kind of separate this into a couple pieces, one is the use of city property and the other being financial contributions that we give them for operations, some of which I think six months may work, others of which, like their own lease of facilities where they have some operations, that might be a little bit of a challenge. But certainly, I think we could engage with them and propose that six-month timeframe. And if nothing else, we could certainly evaluate certain aspects of the program and make changes to the program within that six-month timeframe, even if other things, like their own lease agreement for operations, their headquarters, so to speak, may not be conducive to six months. So if we could learn that, by the next time we discuss the budget, we could come in and make sure you understand what portion of our contributions could fit within that six-month timeframe and essentially be reduced, altered, or eliminated within that timeframe, and what, if anything, might need to be encumbered for a longer period of time.
Thank you. That's helpful. I know we discussed this last time about CVEP needing clarity from us and their budgeting and their plans as both a tenant of the city and then also an agency that does important regional work around economic development. And so, you know, I hate to put our partners in that situation where, you know, they're left hanging sort of about their status and partnership with the city. I don't like doing business that way, so I'm not, don't think the council's proposing that, but I would like us to be open to their timeline about their budgeting process and what they might need as both a tenant and organizations that we fund in terms of a timeline and not just picking six months. But I'm looking forward to the analysis that we're all discussing and talking about how to increase and improve our economic development activities, I think will be a really important conversation and one that we should continue to look to see all the ways we can fund. Other comments on that item? I don't see any, Marcus.
Okay, thank you. We'll retain that funding. And again, whether it's a six-month appropriation and we reappropriate those funds for another use or the full year, you have the ability to do so with the budget that would be adopted. The next area I know is going to be of some discussion is our special events and contributions. So we've reduced it down to $500,000, and I provided an updated schedule, which was trying to capture year-to-year the various organizations and events that typically received funding. Some of that funding was direct grants from the city, but also included in-kind services and may have also included our component of the PS Resorts funding. So it was kind of a mishmash. But I just wanted to get a sense of the typical and come up with an average. So there were three main entities that got funding and grants, and that was the Senior Center Boys and Girls Club and Well in the Desert. I've updated their average to 25,000. So I'm not suggesting these are the numbers that you would grant to them or if you grant to them, but just coming up with an overall budget, again, so these decisions could be made during the fiscal year. As far as city events and parades, the typical ones are the Black History Month, July 4th, Festival of Lights, Homecoming Parade, Veterans Day, and Palm Springs Pride. Those are typically collectively around 190,000. And then all these other miscellaneous events, which, you know, may or may not occur, is another 200,000. So what I'm suggesting to you is that we can leave this funding in the budget and later on throughout the year, as events occur, we get requests, council can consider at that time appropriating those funds from that account. And so I'll leave it there for your direction.
Councilmember Corr.
And thank you for that, Marcus, and thank you, Mayor. You know, I was wondering is if the right way to do this, you know, a lot of, obviously the events really could fit under departments as department programs, right? A lot of the events really could fit under Parks and Rec and some of it goes through other, you know, if there's homeless, you know, budget can go through there. And so it might be best if these really go through the departments. And, you know, so one suggestion is just we allocate the money, sort of as you're saying, not make any decisions, but as the departments look at these and figure out the costs, you know, be allocated that way. Because we wanted to stop the grant program. We did that because they were all one-offs and we don't want to go back to one-offs either. But when we're getting 100 grant requests for so little money that we have available and it got very challenging for the organizations to spend the time doing it for a little money and a lot of anger from some people if their grant wasn't what they wanted, that we thought that would be a better way to do it, is sort of similar to what I'm suggesting, but I'm open to other ideas, but just I do approve allocating the money. And then, but I think looking at it where it's appropriate to be in departments and then having that funding would make sense. I mean, so many of these events really, we have, you know, our special events folks and Parks and Rec cover many of the events. So I want to throw that out. And then things like Festival of Lights, which I think is 100,000 more, like 130,000 a year. You know, sometimes we've been able to do fundraising and get sponsorships to cover a chunk, sometimes we're not. You know, PS Resorts really has taken over the economic development ones, although some is from our portion. So anyway, I don't know exactly what I'm advocating, other than I think we should budget this and maybe look at doing this through the departments who do this kind of work, I guess is what I'm suggesting.
Thank you. And Councilmember Corr, is that for your proposals for event sponsorship and city events?
Well, I mean, the city events and, you know, so many of these runs, even though they're not city events, they really are. I mean, but they're, they're not getting cash, we just have the budget expense of them. They can be run through our special events program or in some cases, Parks and Rec, right? Because they're recreation, they're walks, however the city manager may think is best. And then for the sponsorships, there have been a couple organizations we've, you know, sponsored. A lot of those can fit under the kind of department work we do, right? I mean, the Boys and Girls Club, a lot of what we're doing is educate, you know, the education and also the Parks and Rec efforts. You know, Senior Center, obviously, is, you know, those two are on city land. Well, in the desert really fits under our homeless funding because we've also in the past funded Martha's, I guess we're not now, we learned, but we funded other services. So that should really be under our, you know, Economic and Social Service Department, you know, look at the best way to allocate those funds.
Thank you. Other comments on that issue? Mayor Protem Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Corr's that I would like to fund the $500,000. I'm not ready to make decisions regarding any specific funding for any program. I would ask staff to come back and take a look at how we can improve the process. We've all had some very frustrating evenings here as we debate what frequently becomes a few thousand dollars here and a few thousand dollars there. Not that those amounts are not important, but they're, we seem to generate some of our strongest debates over some of the smallest amounts of money that we're spending. I would like, though, as we move forward, to see some changes in the process for applying for these funds that we require validation in the application process, that tax reports, that Form 990s and all other nonprofit organization forms and reporting are up to date by receiving a copy of all of those so that we have a good sense of how money is being spent by those organizations that we provide public funding to.
Thank you. I agree with what's been said. I agree with Mayor Protem Middleton's point there. I think that we should allocate the funding and I think we should rethink what we're doing, especially in terms of what's called sponsorship contribution. So this was sort of an old-school model, this process, to support events as a city and event sponsorship. And then, what, maybe four or five years ago, I think Councilmember Corr really led a change in moving away from sponsoring galas and doing more community support, you know, and that's why we've changed the way, for example, the Boys and Girls Club had $10,000 for an event sponsorship, and then they were funded at $40,000 to do important work with kids living in poverty in our community, right? So I think that this does need some policy direction from the city council, you know, if we're going to do policy prevention. You know, I think we should look and see, you know, we've funded the Boys and Girls Club, the Senior Center, you know, different organizations. If we want to do housing and homelessness, like Councilmember Corr said, you know, we can look at the Well in the Desert. We also fund, have funded rental assistance through Jewish Family Services. I see that Find Food Bank Mobile Pantry is not included as a recommended item. I don't know if that's somewhere else, right? But we could pick policy issues that we want to fund, that there's a need in the community. And I would like us to see that, like a thoughtful way of picking, making policy change and helping our community instead of this like one-off process. And I don't think averaging, I think it's the, thank you for the work and the proposal, but I don't think averaging what we've done over the years makes sense because we've changed models. And there might be things on here that we, you know, want to fund differently. But I agree with the proposal about the city events and the event sponsorship, having those go through PS Resorts and then city budgets and city departments, because those are sort of led by the city and the city is involved in them. So I think that, I think we'll have consensus there. I'd love to hear from any other councilmembers if they have comments.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Moving on, I think most of the comments we've received from the public on our draft budget related to the skate park. In discussing that with the operator and with Ms. Alvarado Crawford, we're going to recommend to continue that operation because there's a lot of benefit and programs given to the youth in our community through that contract, a lot of skate park clinics and other events through the summer, and we'd hate to have that end. And so we would recommend, and this isn't changing the budget at all, just to continue those operations through the next fiscal year while we continue to discuss, you know, Cynthia's teen center model, which I think has a lot of value as a joint-use facility with, for non-skaters, as well as some way maintaining the skate park operations and the events that that operator provides. So that's what we're proposing. This doesn't change the budget, but it addresses the comments there. I don't know if council has any comments to make regarding this.
Marcus, I just have one more question on the last item, sorry. So I saw that contingent, contingency funds are So I saw that contingency funds are removed from this budget, and so I think instead you're funding council in a different way to give assistant, staff assistance, and then grants and sponsorships. I'm wondering about contingency funds to attend events and support organizations that way.
The council contingency funds are still budgeted in the council's budget, aside and separate from that $500,000 fund for future decisions on events and sponsorships.
Okay, thank you. I thought I saw it removed from the budget.
Okay, so we'll move on. The homeless program, based on your direction, we've added that 530,000 to the budget, with 100,000 of that to be, you know, for next year's pledge for the CV Housing First program, leaving 430,000 available for leveraging with outside funding from our other partners. And, you know, and just again, leaves you room through the fiscal year to have some funding appropriated and to spend at your direction as we need to. And so that's in the budget. What we have added at your direction is a line item for $200,000 additional in the Communications Department, and we're suggesting that that budget is going to be available again at your direction through the fiscal year. You could decide to add another Community Outreach Media Specialist. There's one in the Police Department who will work full-time on their issues. You have used historically different consultants for support, and that typically runs 40,000. And most recently, you've engaged social media support services, and if that were to continue at the full scope for the full year, it would take 200,000. So we've included 200,000, and you can pick and choose, and, you know, again, this is a rolling budget model, so we anticipate perhaps additional revenues throughout the year. You can always adjust appropriations within the budget if you wanted to increase the overall budget for communications. So with that, I'll turn it over to the council for further discussion.
Thank you. So I strongly support increasing our Communications Department, adding staff. Amy does an incredible job as our PIO, sometimes as a one-woman show, and she works incredibly hard. So I strongly support adding that additional full-time staff person. And the consulting services have been extremely helpful as we communicate with the community about certain issues. I love the work that we're doing on our Facebook page in Spanish, in Spanish social media. I'm really concerned about $200,000 annually, and I'm wondering if it would be better to bring on staff, and we could do it in-house, a lot cheaper, or what are our options there? I know the City of Coachella put out a bid process, a competitive bid process, to get consultants, and the consultant that we currently use was the highest bidder, I think the most expensive. And that's not to say that maybe they do the best work, right? We haven't done a bid process for that. So I'm interested in why it is so much. I think investing in Spanish-language services and communication is worth the money, but I'm wondering what's the most cost-effective, but also effective way we can do it? You know, is that in-house? What are all of our different options? Is that just an incredibly high figure? Do we need to do a bid process? Councilmember Coors.
Great, and thank you for those comments. Yeah, my inclination is, you know, that we allocate it in the budget and give the city manager, you know, some time to sort of see how things are going, and come back with recommendations, right? And if we can do it for less, that's great, but yeah, if we're going to do permanent or long-term consulting contracts, we should do a bid process, absolutely. But I think it would be good, given he's new, if that makes sense to you, of course, Justin, to sort of, you know, see the consultants we're working in, sort of see what's happening, you know, work with Amy, who, I agree with you, is a one-woman job for all these years, and, you know, we're a city where that demands more than one person, I think, to communicate and get stuff out to our residents, which is our real goal. But I know that the city manager is experiencing this, and how to, you know, outreach, and how to get input and outreach, and we discussed that, obviously, in the interviews. So giving him some time to do it, it's sort of like some of the other things, appropriate the money, and then sort of give the city manager time to evaluate and come back with some ideas on how we move forward.
Councilmember Garner, and then Councilmember Wood.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Coors on that. It does say here, though, too, that part of the 200,000 is including the English social media that's also being done, so if we were to only do Spanish, it would be different. So it's a combo of English and Spanish right now.
Thank you. That's helpful. Thanks for correcting that. I think it's just, I'm wondering, that seems really expensive, when you could probably have multiple people in-house to do that, and that might be a better exchange of information. But you're right, that's up to the city manager to advise us about. So I definitely support allocating overall the budget for communication. Councilmember Wood.
I agree with what has been said so far, and I appreciate what my colleagues have said. I'm just wondering if we want to direct the city manager, also consider consolidating some of our communications. You know, we have, the Arts Commission's got a page, you know, this department's got a page, you know, so that our messaging is very clear and consistent across the board. And that would be something, obviously, the city manager can make a direction for.
Mayor and council, if I might, I certainly think that putting together a more comprehensive strategic communications plan that would deal with all of these pieces is important irrespective of funding, but funding would certainly be part of that analysis and conversation. I'm confident that with the help and support of the team, we can come up with a variety of options for you that would give us a more focused, consolidated, and intentional approach to communications, and we could resolve the resource issue at that time as we look at how to accomplish that.
Great answer. Thank you. Other comments on that issue? I don't see any, Marcus.
Great, thank you, council. So that is the operational side of the budget. As we reported, on the personnel side, we've included the contractually obligated salary adjustments for our various employee associations into the budget, and we've also included the funding of the various positions that you've already authorized, plus the additional positions we've recommended that are vacant and currently unfunded, those being a Plans Examiner in the Building Department, an Account Clerk, a cashier for the Finance Department. I am noting a change here. This is in the Finance Department. It's an Executive Administrative Assistant. Instead of an Administrative Assistant, it's a minor change. Given the confidential nature of work performed for the Finance Director, it's important that that be a member of the executive team. It's actually a slight reduction in cost. And again, the Assistant IT Director, the Library Assistant, and then the additional positions in the Recreation Department, where I think you might want to have some discussion, again, on the basis of increasing permit fees in vacation rentals and cannabis operations. The budget does now include the six new code compliance officers funded with those increased permit fees. You know, this proposal was analyzed by Police Department and Veronica's Department, and the city manager and myself. We analyzed the calls for service. We saw that there was a gap where sworn officers were being called by dispatch to answer some of the hotline calls, and so this would ensure that we can provide the coverage we feel is needed by non-sworn staff. So we continue to be more proactive and responsive with regard to our vacation rental program. And as I mentioned, we have thus far yet allocated any funding for code compliance officers specific to our growing cannabis operations program. And so those fees would be, or those costs, again, would be recovered through those increased And I will stop there, as I'm sure there might be some council direction to be given. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Thank you. I'm very supportive of these additional code enforcement officers. They're extremely efficient in the work that they do, both with cannabis and with vacation rentals. Our ability to operate those programs effectively depend on the fact that we have strong, strict laws, and that they will be enforced, and that there is certainty of enforcement. So I'm pleased with the recommendations staff's bringing forward, and fully supportive of these new positions.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have a few questions if I can. Councilmember Coors, you can go, and then I will go.
Either way, it's fine. I actually just have some questions. So for the code enforcement, right, doesn't code enforcement also, we have code enforcement that does stuff downtown and other areas, so is that all being charged, as I've heard, to cannabis and vacation rentals? That's been a concern of some folks that were.
No.
Charging those two programs for folks who do other work. I assume we're not, but I wanted just to...
No, we're not. So we, again, we looked at the schedule of coverage to have a code officer, again, and the value of having code enforcement in one department is that they're cross-trained, and they're available to do any type of code enforcement activity. But in the end, when it comes to vacation rentals, as an example, we know we need to have the coverage by a certain number of staff, and a certain number of code officers through the seven-day work week, and given the hours when those code complaints, or those hotline complaints come in. And so those number of people is what's funded specifically by whether it's vacation rental permits or cannabis. There's other code officers that are just funded through the general fund in the Police Department. And so, again, code officers might fluctuate and be assigned one week to be vacation rental assigned, and then another week to be downtown, doing other types of code enforcement activity. But in the end, the actual number of positions that are funded through the permit fees is specific to the number of people we feel are necessary to provide that coverage. So looking at cannabis, we felt that two code officers would be reasonable through, you know, through a typical week, to be able to do the proactive investigations, to be available to respond to odor complaints, and do that type of work related specifically to cannabis. But the other code officers are also rotating around and doing the other code compliance functions.
So let's just use the two cannabis, but other people can do cannabis if there are complaints at night, because that was one of the things we heard, that if there are complaints in the evening, there's no one, code enforcement doesn't respond.
That's correct.
From some of the public testimony. So this will fix that?
This will provide us the additional capacity, yes, to be more responsive.
But be responsive after normal business hours?
Yes.
Okay, because that, one of the concerns we heard from planning commissioners is that as they're approving cannabis facilities, their concern is that there is no code enforcement in the evenings, but if we have other people in the evenings, even if it's not those two, they can respond on cannabis, right?
Yes.
With the benefit of having them all in one place, as you said, okay. And then, do we track sort of hours or anything, so we can look back in a year and say, you know, actually, we need to adjust these, so we're charging more or less to different permits, right? Or do we just do it sort of based on the person and what they're primarily doing?
No, that's exactly...
See if we could do it more...
That's exactly right. We would evaluate throughout the year whether we have sufficient capacity, or need more capacity or less capacity, and, you know, on an annual basis, we can always evaluate the overall program costs and adjust the fee accordingly.
Thank you.
I have a few questions as well. So this says the addition of six code compliance officers. So what's the cost per code compliance officer, and what's the total cost? Because that's not spelled out in the staff report for the public.
I apologize, Mayor. That was in the prior staff report, but I'll go ahead and go to the PowerPoint slides. I had them just in case. I'll bypass our schedule for a moment. So when it comes to the vacation rental program, that fee was established prior to 2016 at $234, but it never came close to covering our full cost to administer that program. Back on November 30th, 2016, council reviewed a robust enforcement and administrative program and established a $900 fee at that time, and that was based on a $1.7 million budget. So you can see here, that was from the staff report at that time, a certain number of positions, including code enforcement officers and a lot of vacation rental assistants, including the vacation rental coordinators and assistants that were related to monitoring and TOT collections and auditing, as well as other services there. When we looked at the growing vacation rental program, and the increasing number of permits, and the increasing number of hotline calls, we developed this program. To answer your question, a code compliance officer, it's about $500,000 for four of them, so it's a $120,000 or $30,000 fully burdened position with two shared vehicles. So the total budget for vacation rentals that's built into the draft budget is about $2.5 million, and then dividing that by the number of current permits we have, that's how we arrived at the fee of $1,189. And similarly for, and then I just wanted to share, this proposed fee compares to some of these other cities. Now, some of these cities have recently implemented moratorium or suspensions, but they still have a period of time where they're issuing these permits while those periods end, but you can see that the proposed fee is in line with some of these other cities, in fact, lower. When it comes to cannabis, our initial fee is $4,092 with a renewal fee of $1,000, but those fees were really not sufficient to cover the full cost of administering the program, and as it's grown, our costs have increased, with over 67 cannabis permits. So we developed this overall program, and again, we're careful to segregate the costs for these two main divisions of that department, so that the permit fees are only covering those specific costs. And so, again, the new, two new code officers there at $250,000, it's about $125,000 fully burdened cost. And based on consensus direction we received at the last council meeting, the direction was to recover the cost of the entire program, which would increase the fees to $10,984. And as I mentioned, that compares, and is reasonably consistent with some of the other fees we've seen in some of the other cities. I hope that answered your question, Mayor.
Thank you. So you said that they rotate, so is it that two code compliance officers would be dedicated to cannabis, and then vacation rentals, or would they continue to rotate positions?
Well, I might have the police chief or Veronica come up, but I think the idea is that you've got a schedule of code enforcement officer staffing. You don't talk about the person, but you've got the staffing in place to cover a schedule. And so, just like a police officer has a schedule or a beat, a code officer is going to have an assignment. So today, you're going to be assigned to be focused on cannabis and odor control, and that has a specific schedule. And then another position has a schedule for vacation rentals, another position has, you know, basically a flexible assignment for any other type of code enforcement activity. So the department itself, or the division of code enforcement, will have the total number of positions and a schedule outlined, and then each one would be given an assignment by the lieutenant of what they're going to be assigned to monitor for that specific schedule.
Thank you. That makes sense. I don't need an answer from the police chief or Veronica. So, and the city has the hours that we spend on those activities for both vacation rentals and cannabis?
Yes, with vacation rentals, it's pretty clear, because we know, and we track the hotline calls as... as they come in on a daily and hourly basis. So we know when we need the coverage to really adequately respond to those issues.
Thank you. So I'm really concerned about this and adding six officers during this time when we have had budget concerns and talked about, you know, is this a sustainable model? I do support increased enforcement in cannabis. I do think we've heard from the community that that's a need. Councilmember Garner and I had a meeting with staff as the vacation rental liaison. And it was shared that 87% of the calls for service or the complaints are, nothing is found by the code compliance officers. And so, you know, you have to guess what proportion of those are sort of unfounded or frivolous claims. And then we talked about our administrative policy is to go out to each and every single complaint, even if the complaint is there are kids playing in the pool, which actually is a high proportion, a large number of calls that we get. And we are sending out code compliance officers to people's homes in the city of Palm Springs when they have kids playing in the pool. And there being kids in the pool, even though that's not an illegal activity. So to me, it sounds like we should look at governmental efficiency and effectiveness of enforcement before saying, we're getting all these calls for service. We should add six more officers. To me, I think an analysis of the need and the efficiency there would be the next step before just adding people to continue that level of enforcement. And I, you know, it's interesting. I'm hearing from the community, both for cannabis and for vacation rentals and for people using code compliance, that they want us to reassess that in both the police department or the Department of Special Programs. So because of, you know, police officers having to cover for code compliance issues when they have more important things to do and then reports of, you know, police officers coming to people's homes and things like that. So I'm not convinced that six officers are needed at this time. I would really like to see us assess, you know, what is our policy about enforcement? What is actually needed? Should we be responding to each and every call even when they're frivolous? Should we be responding to, you know, 12 calls a day if that's what neighbors are doing and we know that they're frivolous, that sort of thing? So I have a lot of concerns about this. I know that council discussed it at the last meeting a little bit when I wasn't here. But I would like to see more analysis. And I think the community has asked for that as well in the public comments, especially when we're increasing fees to add that additional enforcement. And that's not to say I oppose enforcement. It's just that I think it should be now analyzed. Councilmember Mayor Protem Middleton.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to have to push back a little bit on this. Enforcement really does matter. And if there are frivolous calls, if there are calls that are baseless, then that is certainly something that we need to investigate and follow up. But you don't know that a call is baseless when you first receive it. Our code enforcement officers frankly get very good at being able to distinguish calls that seem to be harassing calls. One of the things I know from the work I've done on vacation rentals in particular over the years is there are times where people are making calls that are unnecessary. One of my favorite examples was the call that came in complaining about noise where the homeowner was able, or the vacation rental owner was able to demonstrate the call came in before the guests arrived. But, so those kinds of events do happen. But I recently had a call regarding children playing in the pool. It was a vacation rental. And it had gone on all day at an extremely loud level. And we encourage and we want folks to have a good time. But you don't have the right to come into a vacation rental and have decibel levels that exceed what is allowed under our city ordinances. If we want to be able to maintain this hospitality option in our city, enforcement is absolutely fundamental to making it work. And when this hospitality option was challenged some years ago, it was because we had been negligent in our enforcement and we did not have the resources in place to make sure that legitimate calls were being responded to. So I encourage the analysis, but this is not an area where going too lean is going to pay off for us.
Thank you for those comments. And I wasn't suggesting we shouldn't enforce. I just don't see any data or analysis in the staff report about the number of calls, you know, the percent that are unfounded, the percent that, you know, are responded to, you know, what level of enforcement is really needed? Because I do think our community would say, you know, overall that we do have a, we have been providing a very high level of enforcement. And so to add six more officers to that overall, obviously, is just a question mark for me. Other comments? Councilmember Garner?
I think we're ignoring how outdated our code is. We also have requirements that if your fence isn't a certain height and someone can see your trash cans from the street, that that's not allowed. And that we've had residents who have actually gone around their neighborhood and provided code enforcement with a list of all of the trash cans that you could see from the road. So I don't want to, I don't want people to, I want everyone to realize that there's a high level of petty that is involved in code enforcement. And I'm not interested in continuing to follow up on those types of calls. It's absurd. It's a waste of time. And it's complaining about your neighbors for the sake of complaining and not because anyone's trash cans are actually bothering you. We also have code that says that you can't have, if you have a motor home and your fence isn't taller than your motor home, then that's also not allowed. That's been on the books for years. And it wasn't until we got a ton of new residents that came in within the last 10 years that suddenly my friends who have had a motor home in their backyard for 30 years were suddenly being told that they weren't allowed to do that anymore, even though it's never been bothering anybody. So we're dealing with gentrification in Palm Springs. And the gentrification that we're dealing with in Palm Springs is causing these old outdated codes to then be enforced by our code enforcement. And they're directly impacting our long-term second, third generation residents more than they are anybody else. And I'm really, really tired of it. And so for me, this is not just, this is a much larger issue that we have to deal with and address. And it's very, very clear as well, like who gets called on code enforcement in desert highlands? The neighbors who complained to me are new. And they, they often don't ask, I ask, have you talked to your neighbor? No. That is one of those tightest knit, close-knit communities where everybody wants to talk to their neighbor. Everybody knows each other. And new residents are coming in and they're not willing to talk to their neighbor. So I think this is just a much larger issue than just hiring more staff to address calls. I really do think that we need to do the analysis before we put, we hire new people. And it's going to take time. This isn't something that, you know, we're not, people are going to be mad at first. But if we phase it in, or phase it out, rather, then it can work. You know, you start off by saying, no, we're not going to allow people to get dinged for having their trash cans visible from their backyard when you, when it's, it's just a frivolous complaint. We're not, we're taken out of the code. We're not sending people out for that. We're not sending people out for all of these small infractions anymore. And slowly, you know, you create a culture that is one that is encouraging people to talk to their neighbors. It's one that, where people know that when they call, and it's legit, that code enforcement is there. But that if there's a frivolous complaint or if you're calling on your neighbor 12 times just to be rude, that no, there's going to be, there's going to be, you're going to have to take responsibility for that. There will be a fine on you for that. Or no, the code won't come back out, you know, after you've called 12 times. But these are real things that are happening. And it's just the impact is not, is not fair at all. It's not equitable.
Thank you. Other comments? I don't see any, so.
I think given this discussion so far, it'd be really helpful, you know, at one of our next two meetings before we vote on the budget at the end of June, to maybe have a little more analysis on this, right? Because this is one area where, you know, really laying out the need and setting that out. And I agree with Councilmember Garner, there's a bigger discussion on what our codes look like. They are outdated, right? And what we're responding to and as well. But I think that kind of, a little more analysis maybe on this issue. This seems to be the one where we've gone back and forth a couple of times on. And I think it would be good to have a little more analysis before we make decisions here as well.
Thank you for that. Fun fact to lighten the mood since it's 10:15, our ordinance still prohibits thong underwear and swimsuits from spring break 30 years ago. So that's still in the code. And I know we've eliminated really outdated language in the code. And yeah, we are due for updates on some of those issues.
We could address for spring break council meeting differently if we knew. And all broken the law.
Thanks. Marcus, do you need any other direction on that issue?
I don't. We will certainly, at the next council meeting, which will be May 27th, when we present the comprehensive budget with all funds, we'll provide you the analysis we performed so you can see the, you know, the gaps where we feel we need additional code officers. Because, you know, even, as you know, during the COVID pandemic, we were understaffed and unable to really dedicate the full complement of staff to address the whole range of code enforcement activities that were occurring in addition to the ongoing hotline complaints for vacation rentals and odor control complaints. So the proposal was just simply to make sure that we can be responsive to all of those complaints and as well as be proactive. So we'll have that analysis for you. So the next council meeting, it'll again be the draft comprehensive budget. And then should you be willing, on June 10th, at the public hearing, you could adopt the comprehensive budget. And then, of course, you have the second opportunity on June 24th. We are required, as you know, to adopt a budget by the end of the fiscal year. So with that, that completes my report, Mayor and Council.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Marcus, so I've got a question. It was unclear to me how much money was being placed in the budget next year for street repairs.
We, we will go into that at the next meeting. We'll include our five-year CAP. I don't have the number off the top of my head. We are obviously showing $3 million in Measure J in each fiscal year. We're planning to bring forward to you approval to bid completion of the last paving project, so a $6 million paving project. And we also have the gas tax and the Measure A funds that go towards, you know, projects like Slurry Seal, which you see going on currently throughout the city. So we definitely have added back in the funding for the street repairs.
Okay, great. I would ask that, as you come back with that proposal, that we look long-term in terms of developing a plan whereby in a certain number of years, three, four, five, six, that we have laid out a roadmap that would get us to 100% of the streets in Palm Springs having a PCI score of 70 or above, 70 being the satisfactory score. So that it's not just something that we look at, how much are we going to fund this year? But what's it going to take in terms of a mid-range plan to get us to where every street is satisfactory?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Other comments from council? I think we're all looking at our packet, so give us a minute. Do you have any other comments or questions? You know, I have some, just looking at sort of the line-by-line draft budget that was presented. But I think that I'll just meet with the city manager to go over it instead of doing it here, since it's getting late. But there were some large increases in the budget in some of the departments and then some reductions that I didn't fully understand. So we can do that at the next meeting. So I don't see any other comments. And this is just for direction. So staff, you need no formal action at this time, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. So moving on, and our rules of order show that typically we discuss the order of the agenda and see if we want to complete the items and manage the meeting and adjourn by 11:00. So that's what our rules say. So how is everyone feeling? We have, what, just one more item? Do you want to do that item tonight?
I'm up for it.
Thought we might. We usually just push through. And this is a lighter meeting than we're used to. So being consensus, we will move on to new business. So the next item is Item 5A, Discussion and Direction on Assembly Bill 571, Local Campaign Contribution Limits and Other Potential Campaign Finance Regulations. If we can have a staff report, please.
Mayor and Council, real quick, before we turn it over to the city attorney to go through the staff report, I just wanted to mention a little bit, there is a small section at the end for fiscal impacts, which you're used to seeing, that identifies some marginal costs, but also indicates that some of those are unknown. I just want to emphasize that an important distinction between kind of doing nothing and deferring to some of the state rules is that the state administers a lot of the review and I think potential enforcement. And that really, I think even small changes where Palm Springs might set its own rules would implicate city staff to do that same work. And depending on how complex that becomes, that really can be a pretty significant undertaking. And some of that is related strictly to the activity. Just bear in mind also that even marginal increases can at times put us over a threshold of existing staff capacity. I know our city clerk could expand on that a little bit. The city attorney may also. But just understand as you go through and really consider whether or not we want to have our own rules, that at some point, it could be one of those significant margins that puts us into a category of needing additional staff help. And with that, unless there are questions along those lines, turn it over to the city attorney.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you is really meant as kind of a broad discussion. And we're seeking direction from you in terms of kind of two things. One is what the council's direction is with regard to campaign contribution limits as currently established now with the default under Assembly Bill 571, AB 571. And then also whether the council has any desire to direct staff to research other potential campaign finance regulations. So I'll start first with kind of a discussion of AB 571. That law was actually enacted in 2019, went into effect January 1st, 2021. It establishes on a local basis a campaign contribution limit of $4,900 per election. That dollar amount is then subject to change in every odd year from the FPPC, the state agency that regulates campaign finance and the Political Forum Act. So cities have options with regard to what they want to do with this default campaign contribution limit. They can either default to the state limit and that automatically will apply within the city. will apply within the city. The city also has the option of adopting a lower campaign contribution limit than the state limit, or the city can adopt a higher campaign contribution limit than is established by the state. It's important, as the city manager mentioned, that if the city opts out of the state default limit, then the FPPC will not enforce and administer the city's own campaign contribution limit. So the benefit of going with the state limit is that the FPPC will enforce and administer that, whereas if we set our own campaign limit, then we will be responsible for administering and enforcing that. So the city really needs to consider whether adopting a local campaign contribution limit is worth it, considering the administration and enforcement costs. Couple of other characteristics of AB 571, the state default contribution limit does not apply to campaigns opposing the qualification and election on recall measures. However, cities can adopt a local contribution limit for those types of elections. Also, AB 571 allows a candidate for city office to carry over campaign funds to pay the expenses of a subsequent election for that same office, but again, a city can prohibit this practice in its own local contribution limit ordinance. And then finally, AB 571 does not apply limits to local candidates' use of personal funds for their own campaigns, as we'll discuss later. Personal expenditure limitations are generally viewed with great suspicion by courts. So that's the background of AB 571, and so kind of the first question that the council is being asked is whether the council wants to kind of remain in the status quo, which is a defaulting to the state's $4,900 per election season or election cycle contribution limit, or whether the council wants to adopt a higher or lower limit. A little bit of background, in 2016, the city's Ethics, Transparency, and Governmental Reform Task Force had a campaign finance subcommittee, and that subcommittee issued a proposal with regard to possible campaign finance reforms. The staff report contains the final report from that subcommittee. Unfortunately, a majority of the subcommittee could not make a recommendation because of a fairly recent United States Supreme Court case. Citizens United, in that case, held that essentially unlimited campaign spending on independent expenditures by corporations and other special interests are allowed, and, as I mentioned earlier, previous court decisions had prevented limits on how much a candidate can spend of their own money. So the subcommittee ultimately did suggest two possible ordinances. The first ordinance would ban contributions for those who are doing business or negotiating to do business within the city, and the second proposed or possible ordinance would have limited any political contribution from any one donor to no more than $1,000 per candidate per election cycle. So it was essentially a $1,000 campaign contribution limit. Considering other potential campaign finance regulations, I'll just kind of quickly summarize some of the key bullet points in terms of the legal principles that surround campaign contribution limits. With regard to ballot measure contribution limits, courts have held that cities can't bar corporations or other entities from making contributions to a committee that's organized for a ballot measure. Basically, courts have said that that doesn't present enough of a concern for preventing corruption, as does campaign contributions to candidates or their committees. With regard to regulations on candidates or their controlled committee contributions, the courts have recognized that a ban on those types of contributions could be permissible in some circumstances. With regard to dollar amount contributions, again, courts have recognized that those types of contribution limits are permissible. However, aggregate contribution limits were recently held to be unconstitutional in a case called McCutcheon. That was from 2014. And aggregate contributions are basically limits that deal with how many candidates or committees a person can contribute to, as opposed to just a single contribution limit. Restrictions on contributions to committees that are making independent expenditures in support of or in opposition to a candidate are reviewed under what's called a strict scrutiny standard, and so therefore, they almost inevitably are not allowed by courts. So that's the first category of regulations with regard to contribution limits. The second category is expenditure limits. Expenditure limits are viewed more suspiciously by courts than are contribution limits, because courts, for better for worse, kind of equate spending one's own money as speech. So courts have said that it is unconstitutional to limit a candidate's personal expenditures unless that limitation is conditioned on acceptance of public funds. So some public agencies will set up a public funding mechanism, and then if a candidate accepts those public funds, they are essentially opting into a limitation on their own expenditures. Independent expenditure limitations are generally viewed with suspicion by courts, as long as they aren't made at behest of an affected candidate or a committee. And then organizational expenditure limits, limiting or eliminating the amount of money that a political committee or corporation spends may unduly burden protected for some activities, and so those are sometimes permissible. The final category of regulations is disclosure requirements. These types of disclosure requirements are generally viewed more favorably by courts, since they inform the citizenry of the different types of interests that might be involved. The one exception is for smaller parties. Generally, courts are concerned about smaller political parties possibly being affected by disclosure requirements, and so if we have disclosure requirements, we may have to make exceptions for small parties that could be affected by disclosing their donors. And then finally, with regard to reporting and advertising, there are various state laws already in place under the Political Reform Act that require timely reporting of expenditures and contributions. Some cities have kind of increased those types of reporting requirements and advertising requirements. So as detailed in the staff report, those are some options that the city might want to consider in terms of maybe making more timely reporting requirements or expanding on advertising requirements for those entities that are putting out advertisements around the time of elections. So that kind of summarizes what the legal issues are regarding campaign contributions and campaign finance rules. Again, the first issue that we're asking the council to give direction on is whether the council wants to do anything with regard to AB 571 and the current default $4,900 campaign contribution limit. And then the second question is, does the council want to give direction for us to look into and research other potential campaign finance regulations? That concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from Council? Councilmember Garner.
Thank you, Jeff, for that, and I think it's great that the state moved on this and is requiring this of all of our cities, and as much as I would really love to see us do even more, I'm very concerned about our ability to actually enforce it. My leaning towards all of this is to go with the state amount and see how things go, see how our next elections are impacted, and then if it's really not enough, then to move and do more. Because it just seems like there's a lot more that we could probably do, but do we actually have the capacity to make it work the way we want it to? That's just my concern. If we were to determine that we had the capacity, then I would be more interested in having the larger discussion, but right now, that's where I stand.
Councilmember Corz, and then Mayor Proton Middleton.
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of things. So one, I tend to have a similar view. I'm just, I have the same concern about our capacity, just to do the things I would want to do, I think end up requiring more staff. On the contribution amounts, I mean, one of the things, both Mayor Proton Middleton and I were involved in the Transparency and Ethics Task Force back in 2016 and 17, and, you know, we had a group of lawyers really look into this, and they concluded, as much as they wanted to change and do lower contribution limits and things along those lines, in looking at places that had done them, what happened was more money was spent on the elections, but more was spent by independent expenditures and outside groups than by the residents donating. And that's not the result you want, right? And unfortunately, in my view, I think the Supreme Court has made it really impossible, because if you allow outside groups to spend unlimited amounts of money, and you limit a candidate to $500 per donation, there's no way to catch up, especially when those amounts are spent at the very end of the campaign. So that's my concern, right, is we don't want that, and we typically, independent expenditures tend to be more negative, right, because the candidate's not accountable, right, than what a candidate might do. So it just raises all kinds of issues, and so I do, just briefly, I thought all the other issues, options, I know I discussed a lot of these with the city attorney, if we were to go there on, you know, more disclosure for the independent expenditures, more reporting, having them to have to report when they have an agreement, you know, like to buy TV instead of when they write the check, because that would get more notice. I think those are all things, if we had the bandwidth, that are really great ideas, and we should look at. But I'm not sure we're quite at that point yet, and I really want to know, you know, if doing any of this moves everything over to us to enforce all the FPPC laws, including the states, that's a real concern that was shared earlier, so. Last thing is, I prefer knowing who's giving, who's spending money on campaigns and dark money, and that, that's just such a big concern here. And we've been lucky, although we have seen it in some recent elections, right? We've had candidates who spent a lot of money on their own election, and we've had independent expenditure committees spend a lot of money in support and against candidates. And I think candidates have been able to respond by raising money. And if we had the funds rather than staff, I'd rather see us figure out public financing of our city council races that let people run without having to raise all that money and do some hybrid. It'd be great, you know, as we look at this, to have a sense of what it would cost if we're just doing it for city council races, right? We're not like a place, you know, like San Francisco, that's a city-county, or Los Angeles, we're a small city, and what would some public financing, you know, if everyone agreed to accept those limits, how would that work? Would be something I know that isn't in here, but I'd be really interested in looking into at some point. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Middleton.
Okay. I think I can keep this fairly short. I concur with the comments of Councilmember Garner and Councilmember Corz in very, very large measure. AB 571 is progress, and I think it's good progress. The three areas that concern me the most are independent expenditures, over which folks have absolutely no control how that is done, dark money, and individuals of great wealth or considerable wealth who can self-fund. And right now, the courts have given us almost no ability to control or influence any of those areas. So I think we're best off to use our resources wisely, default to AB 571, monitor very closely that there's full disclosure of every expenditure in our elections, and if we need to make targeted surgical reforms, let's do that in subsequent years based on some actual experience.
Councilmember Wade.
I agree with everything that's been said by the three councilmembers that just spoke. I do think, however, that leaving it with, leaving the regulation with the FPPC is a better alternative for us, because it's independent, it's third-party, it's outside, the influence within. If you're an incumbent running with your city staff, that could be problematic. So I agree with everything that's been said thus far, and would like to see it remain with FPPC, the regulation part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I also agree with everything that's been said. I think it's problematic, and just between a rock and a hard place where the courts, the Supreme Court has left us. I mean, we can't regulate dark money. We can't regulate people self-financing. I mean, how are normal people supposed to compete? If we have limits, but someone can self-finance? If we have limits, but a PAC can donate, you know, spend an unlimited amount of money and not have as much transparency? It's just super problematic. And so I agree with council that we should use the FPPC regulations and be consistent with the state and see how that goes. I would love to see us lead the way in additional transparency, like Councilmember Corz mentioned, for independent expenditures. I think we could do some exciting work there if we have the bandwidth. And I also know that the, I know the CBRA working group that Councilmember Garner worked on recommended exploring democracy dollars or public financing, and I would love to see us do a pilot or something like that. I mean, if you look at my last election, a PAC sent, the police union PAC sent $60,000 in an independent expenditure, you know, another one individual made a $40,000 contribution. So, you know, there's so much money, even in our little elections, that should be $20,000 a last campaign. It's such a waste of public funds, and people just can't compete. So if we limited individuals to a certain amount, that would be a huge problem. So I hope that the Supreme Court, though probably not in my lifetime, will change that rule. And I would love to see, you know, what an expense for democracy dollars or public financing might look like, and maybe we can find some philanthropy that would be interested in piloting that or something like that, because we have a small city, it's such a community-oriented city, that's public dollars that could really go to public good and not to, you know, attack ads or a waste of money. So with that, I think we've all agreed. So city attorney, we, this would be to set no city campaign contribution limit and default to the state limit. So do you need a motion to that effect?
No. We've heard the decision consensus of the council. The state statute applies as long as there's no action, and so no action is required tonight.
Councilmember Corz.
So for the city attorney, if we don't take action on that piece, but we want at some point to do increased disclosure rules, right, for independent expenditures, and when something is considered an expenditure by campaigns or IEs, would that mean everything, our entire system goes to FPPC, or would that just be separate? We could just do that on our own without that next piece?
Just that piece would be regulated and enforced by the city. However, when I say "just that," I would put it in air quotes, because that would involve an entire reporting system and program that we, the city would have to monitor. But the other dollar limits would still be enforced by the FPPC.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments? Saying that, we will take no action, and so we will default to the state limit. The next item is City Council and City Manager Request for Upcoming Agenda Development. City manager, do you have anything you'd like to start, and then we can go to council?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would only point out that on the tentative upcoming meeting schedule that we submitted to you, we have an overloaded May 27th meeting, so you see that that right now is estimated at seven and a half hours. Bear in mind that this is really the regular business. We've been fairly good at predicting times. Five hours takes us generally past 11:00, hopefully. Five hours takes us generally past 11:00, hopefully ending before midnight. We estimated four hours for today, and we're right about on that schedule after 10:00, but before 11:00. So seven and a half hours, needless to say, is too much, probably needs to be trimmed by at least two hours, and I see a couple of things that, you know, might work. A couple pairs of items that I think ought to remain together. One is the Community Workforce Agreement and a Labor Peace Agreement. The other is the Parklets and Outdoor Merchandise. Either of those, I think, might be well-suited to move, depending on the preference of council and other timing. I know that Parklets and Outdoor Merchandise is likely to be discussed at an upcoming Business Retention Meeting, and so that might be one where a little more elaborate review of specific components and outreach with stakeholders might make that one a good one, or a pair of things to move, but want to solicit your input on that first.
Councilmember Corrigan.
I just have one question, and I appreciate having those pairs together, I think that does make sense, is on the Parklets. When the state, my understanding was, I know there's a bill moving forward, but it won't be done probably by June 15th, to allow the Parklets to remain for a year if cities wanted them to. But what happened on June 15th? Because my understanding was once the emergency orders were lifted, the alcohol, you know, expansion on Parklets went away. Do we know anything more from ABC? Will that be temporarily, potentially temporarily extended while the state bill moves forward? Just curious if you heard anything, city attorney?
I have not, no.
I couldn't find anything in mine. Okay. I mean, even if we do it by June 10th, it's probably fine. And given, I think, the point, since we're doing it Business Retention, I think on May 18th, that would give more time to then take what we got from Business Retention to various stakeholders and the public. So I think that's probably the better of the two, but I don't feel strongly.
Other comments?
I support the recommendation of the city manager to move those items if at all possible. We can't do seven and a half hour meetings, it would be preceded by a two, two and a half hour closed session. It's just, it's not doable. And we've got a budget that we still need to go through. That is a time-sensitive item.
Councilmember Wood.
I agree with Mayor Proton, and I also agree with Councilmember Corrigan on the recommendation. I do think that the Parklets are not an emergency right now, but something that we can vet through the subcommittee and through the stakeholders, and kind of put it together before we come to council.
Okay, Mayor and Council, if there's general agreement on that, I will create a little ripple effect to the June 10th and 24th meeting, and then of course, we're always open for notes on anything we're missing on the future items or priorities that need to be adjusted on the rest of that outlook.
Thank you. Councilmember Request? Mayor Proton Middleton.
Yeah. This will be very short. The governor does plan to reopen most things on June 15th. We don't know when the emergency orders that authorize virtual meetings are going to end, but I think it's appropriate for us to ask staff to come back to us with a plan for when we would be returning to more normalized approaches to our meetings.
Thank you. Other council requests? I see heads shaking now. Anything else from city staff?
I don't think so.
Thank you. So we will move towards adjournment. So the next city council meeting will be held on May 27th, 2021, at 5:30 PM. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.